Oh, good Brits here.
Starting out with Brits here.
All right, we'd like to get going. This is the Pleasant Grove City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. And we're calling this meeting to order. First of all, to start off with, we'll have a pledge of allegiance by Chief Thomas, and then opening remarks by Ken Young.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a little while back, we were starting to do something different with opening remarks, because we're calling it opening remarks, right?
Anything you want to do, Ken.
Anything I want to do, okay.
Within reason.
Let's talk football.
A wise man once said, "Continuous efforts, not strength or intelligence, is the key to unlocking our potential." That was Winston Churchill. So, he knew a lot about that. I think that's a key for all of us in doing anything in government or community work. It's not so much about how smart you are, or how strong you think you are, whatever, but it's just persevering and doing what's right and hanging in there. That'll say a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you so much for this opportunity to gather together as a community and as leaders of this city to talk about those important issues that affect us. We are thankful for this opportunity to have this type of government and opportunity of freedom in our country. We pray that Thy Spirit will guide our discussions this night, that all will go well, and that we will all speak feasibly to one another. And we say this name in Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Oh, thank you, Ken, and Chief. Also, we need to record that all council members are here, and the mayor is absent. On purpose. I don't think we'll have to put that down there, but... All right, let's get going. First of all, Scott, are there any changes to the agenda?
The only item was item 10G. This is Grove Creek Center Commercial Subdivision. Marty, did we need to continue that?
Yes.
Okay, so we will, when we get to that item, just, we need that continued indefinitely.
We also need to continue the next item.
Item H as well?
Yes.
Let's keep going. This is a good thing for all of us.
10G and 10H will need to be continued. Do we have date certain on H, or?
H, we can continue to next meeting. G, we probably ought to do indefinite.
Yeah. H would be November 1st. 9B.
So, GH?
What did we decide on 9B, Ken? On that public hearing on the residential facility?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That one needs to be continued indefinitely.
9B as well.
I'm doing my part to shorten the meeting tonight.
So, we do that when the item comes up?
Yeah.
So, we do, but we, when we approve the agenda, we mention that, or we don't?
Well, you can, you can just approve the agenda as is, and then when we get to those items, we can take that action.
All right. Need a motion for tonight's meeting agenda?
Make the motion, Mayor Protem, that we approve the agendas written with a continuation of items 9B, 10G, and 10H.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, now is the open session. This is the part of the meeting that if you have anything that you want to say that's not part of one of the agenda items, and Sister Jolly is already up and ready to go. All right, this is the open session, so we'll open that now.
And actually, from now on, we will just need your name.
Oh, wow.
So, for all of our...
Well, I've got to tell you, it's the 150 North.
The worst road in America.
And it is now officially.
But, Madonna, remember, you make the best bread. Something positive.
Well...
Yes, you do.
Everything else here is positive, except this.
Okay, perfect.
Because it was kind of a nightmare. I was driving along, and I saw this water running down, and I got down to 150 North, and the water was gushing out this high. And Jennifer can attest to it, Laura can attest to it. Because my neighbors that were down the road from me were down there trying to bury it so that it wasn't flooding the people below the road, because it goes down.
I love neighbors.
And I don't know, I think it took at least an hour or more for help to come. I think they wanted to go elk hunting, is what I heard.
Best way to get speedy help.
Well, they wanted to go elk hunting.
Yeah.
The people that were, had the water flooding, didn't want to go elk hunting. But I tried to get those people to come that had gone to all that work, and they were too busy. A young couple, they were too busy. But this is the third break on my road in less than two years. And that's why I think I can officially call it the worst road in town. And Jennifer told me, I thought there was just one break, or two breaks on 14th East. She said there's been five on 14th East, we think. The breaks just went from 14th East down to 150 North, and I'm... And I don't know, it's been pretty bad. So, have a nice day on the four-hour meeting. And please make plans to fix my road before I die.
Drive safe.
Marty, has that been resolved, or do we know what's going on with that?
Do you want, should we talk about that later? Let's just finish with open session, and then we can talk about it later. Okay.
Hi.
Name.
Mike McMurtry.
Mike McMurtry.
Mike McMurtry. We've got some drawings for it. I think I emailed these to you. They're, we're here to discuss the 600 West Center Street redevelopment, is what we're going to call it. We want to open a nightclub. We don't.
You serve steak.
So, right now, it's an existing mechanic shop. It's rundown, it's got gravel, parking, it's fenced with an ugly chain-link fence. We've got some developer money that we'd like to come in, give it a facelift, asphalt, add some lights. The problem we have and why we're here is to get your input on, in order to make it financially, in order to make it work as an investment, we've got to have a car lot on it, because you've got to double the rent there. So, we're kind of here to discuss it, because either, from a commercial real estate standpoint, either we wait for 10, 15, 20 years until it makes it sense to knock, until it makes sense to knock it down and build an office building, find an office developer, or something like that, or we redevelop what we have there, give it a facelift. I guess our, our common sense on it, we know that it's not in a zoning that allows for car dealerships right now. But we don't feel, where it sits on the tracks, we would feel that it would improve the property, highest and best use, and it wouldn't change, even though the zoning would change, nothing would change on the property, because right now, there's just broken-down cars on the front that are getting fixed and worked on. So, we basically would be asphalting, give it a facelift, pull out all those broken-down cars, and put a row of cars for sale. And then it keeps another business in Pleasant Grove. Atop Auto would move over as a tenant. They would put their cars there. Steve would run the mechanic shop, which would be there. So, we're here to get some input and thought from the city council. As far as, we know you can't vote on it right now. We go through the channels to make sure that, we're going to add curb and gutter, we'll add some lights, the facelift, we've got some drawings of what we would do. Our bind is we've got some 1031 money that we've got to place. If we're going to do this, it's going to have to be kind of a good faith over the next couple of weeks. We'd go in and buy the property. If not, we'd back out, so...
So, there is a timeframe that you're working with?
On our end, yeah. I know it's on yours. But if we feel comfortable enough that you all look at it, and we feel that the votes are there to say, yeah, with some conditions, curb and gutter, some landscape, you know, maybe some lights, make it look better. I just look at, if we're looking for tax revenue, we keep a business that sells cars. How many cars do you sell a month, Jim? Okay. And Ross, do you do any? Do you sell any? Just kidding, he just works at the temple. So, there's some tax revenue there to keep them there. Is that my timer?
Yes.
My goodness, I'm done.
Okay. Well done.
Yes.
I'm, I mean, I was open before, I'm still open to looking at that as, for that use.
I'm just wondering what needs to happen if we're open for the conversation? Is there an agenda? Do you have time to get us on the agenda?
They have to run through Planning Commission, and this would be a rezone, I mean, public hearing.
So, you're actually looking for a flavor of how we're feeling?
Yeah, we just want you, no pressure, there's half a million dollars riding on it.
No pressure.
But if you felt like, yes, this is, this is something good, if not, we're okay to back out of it, too. Our feelings won't be hurt. We just don't want to jump into something that we can't see all the way to the end.
Yeah.
Steve, you had something?
Okay, well, let...
Can you remember my name?
Yes. So, do we start the, start the clock on him? All right, so go ahead and say your name.
Oh, Steve Toll. Our last discussion was that several of you would like to see if we were the owner, and kind of what it would look like before you made the decision. And so, we have got the financing put into place, architectural drawings there. And if you turn that over, there's kind of a plot plan on the back of what, what it would look like. But we feel like that's not going to be the exact, because whatever the, the planning committee wants is what we'll end up finishing up as. But, but this is kind of a second go-around from our previous visit this year.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our thoughts, Jim, on that thing. We were going to keep some glasses. The long-term goal of this would be when the market bears it, to turn it into more of detail.
Restaurant.
Steakhouse.
No, it would be to convert it eventually into something, it just, it's got to make sense to buy it now.
Got it. I understand.
All right, Ben?
Yeah, I think I was probably the most favorable when you first discussed this idea. There are concerns for people that it's on the, it's on a main entrance into our city, and so you've seen some of the hesitations people have had. But I'm always open for the conversation. I love the idea of improving that property. I'm happy to talk about it.
I don't know if I can beat, I was the most favorable, but I was pretty close, so, yeah.
So, I'm more competitive than both of those.
I was the most favorable, so I beat both of them. You can go back and check that, it's on the record if you remember. So, yeah, I'm open.
I'm open as well.
Open to listen.
There, you have a good open. No, no, he's, he is very open. He's just more succinct than the rest of us will, will do this. He's just like, yep.
And I think what helps is this.
Oh, yes.
Because we didn't have that before. And so, having a visual of what the potential that could be really, really helps, and I think that, you know, obviously, the Planning Commission will need to see that. But I, I think having an actual visual of the, the vision down there would help, so...
And our long-term plan would not be, I mean, our work rate, the more we can make up rent, the more. So, there will come a time, it's probably 15, 20 years, but where we would want to convert that into office, retail, something to get like...
Twenty-two dollars a square foot, as opposed to?
We just have to have the car lot made.
All right.
So...
There you have it.
They'll work with Ken, or?
Well, yeah, they'll, they'd need to file application for the rezone.
But he can let them know the process?
Absolutely, yep. We'll, we'll run you through it, yep.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else in open session? You guys can leave now.
You don't, you don't have to leave, you're welcome to stay. Wise move.
You can stay if you would like.
Hi, my, my name is Martha Hokey.
Okay.
I live up in Adams Grove. And there's a water issue going north and south. I believe it's a spring water, I'm not sure. And then it's, maybe it's plugged up or something, I don't know. It's flooding the horse pasture area.
Okay.
And now, the water is, at first, it was stagnant and mossy, and maybe even mosquitoes, and the smell was awful. But now, it's turned more into a slushy swamp-like, and it's flowing down in, by my house, just north of me. There's, and then the water is going east and west. And then there's a little, well, big grate at the corner where the north and south water's coming. And now, we have another one, east and west. And in the corner, the water is not, the north and south water is going down this underneath the grate. And the other one, going east and west, it's supposed to go up here, but it's going underneath this, and it's making a big hole there. And I don't know, I put in some pea gravel to deter some weed, and so now, that's washing it down that way, too.
Okay.
And I don't know, all the water, right now, it's a stream, and so, there was no water before.
But now there is.
Right, now, I've been fighting this for over a year, a year and, almost a year and a half. I keep calling people, and nobody does anything about it.
Okay.
And I don't know where to go, so I'm...
I'm going to tell you where to go.
In a nice way.
In a very, very nice way. Marty, raise your hand bigger. This is Marty, he's our Public Works Director. And so, what I would like to do is to hook the two of you up, so that...
Give me your name and number, and I'll, I'll contact you.
All right, so you can just walk right now over there and, and hand him your, your contact information.
All right.
All right. Thank you. All right, anyone else for open session? Yay, Sandy.
I don't know if it'll help.
Sandy Carter.
2708 North, 450 West. I wanted to come today, I wasn't able to come last week, because I wanted to say some things that I didn't think of last time I spoke, and concerning the public safety building location. And I'm not here to voice an opinion about where it should be. I'm here to express my voice and my feelings around the whole process. So, hopefully, I can read this, and I can do it quickly. I realize that our city's gone through a lot of turmoil the last several years. We've just been in the community, I think, six, almost seven years. And there's been a lot of differences, a lot of different opinions, a lot of divisiveness, I feel, a lot of really strong feelings. And I think in and of that self, that can be a good thing, but I think sometimes it's been rather harsh. I'm grateful for the Public Safety Building Committee that spent 14, 15, 16 months together, and I think they did an admirable job in determining what they felt like it was best after discussing both sides and weighing all the different options. What I wanted to say about that is that I'm, I'm overwhelmed by what's going on in our country. I, I can't sleep sometimes. My stomach hurts, my head hurts. I feel, I feel sad. I feel distressed, depressed, and I've been thinking about it a lot today. I've been out all day running around since 9:30 this morning, I haven't been home yet. And I thought a lot about, what difference can I make? And I thought, I only have one voice, and I don't feel like I have much influence in this world. But I thought, we can start here in Pleasant Grove. Maybe our country, to me, is in great turmoil. I'm not thrilled about the election that's coming up, but I can have a voice here. And I care about this community. Mike and I came from Woodland Hills, and we were there for 17 years, and Mike was a former city council member. And we cared very deeply, not just about our neighbors, but about our whole hill, and everyone in it, and the problems and issues that we had. And we feel the same way here. Mike has owned and successfully operated seven different businesses, from advertising to commercial lab to corporate training company. And it came along with a lot of problems, a lot of problem-solving, a lot of confrontations and crucial conversations. And it's been hard. And there were many times compromises had to be made. I wanted to come here and speak to each of you, and ask you, as a city council, to really consider the needs of everyone in the community, not them, and not us. I don't want any more division. I really want it to be brought together. I want this to be united front. And I want you to think about, not this little faction here and this little faction there. I want you to think about all the citizens in the community. When you think about each and every one of us, and not this side and that side. That's really, really important to me. I'm to the point where I want what's best for the city, and whatever decision is made, I'm going to do my darndest, and that's the mild word for it, to support what happens. And I'd really like you to enlist the opinions of the fire chief and the police chief. I feel they know best what their needs are for their departments and the community. And I don't know if they've been asked for their opinion and for their expertise and knowledge. And I, I think that's mostly, and I realize I'm over time, but that's mostly what I want to say. And I know I'm just one person. I don't really mean much, but it means a lot to me. So, please, when you consider the location, please don't think about, I represent just these constituents. You represent all of us. And I know that you care. I know you deeply care. And I know everyone here cares. So, please, do what's best for all of us. That's what I want to ask you.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thanks, Sandy. Love the shirt, by the way.
Me, too.
That was a great game, by the way. All right, anyone else for open session? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. All right, next is our consent items. Does anyone have anything that they want to say about the consent items, or if not, then let's make a motion?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the consent items.
Okay, I need, okay, I have a motion by Eric, and a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I, this is where I always forget if I'm an aye or a...
You still are, you still vote, even though you're proting.
I'm an aye.
A Republican member.
All right. Presentations, we'll go to 8A. And we'd like to invite Kim to come to the mic. First of all, Kim is our new victims' advocate, and so I'm anxious to get her rolling here.
All right, I'm excited to be here. As she said, I'm Kim, Kimberly Schraffel, and I work for the Pleasant Grove Police Department. I started as a dispatcher, loved that job, still would love to be doing that job, too. I heard a lot of different things as a dispatcher that made me realize we had several victims. And I was helping them all the time, but sending officers, sending the victim advocate. Anyway, I, I knew that it was kind of a job that I was always interested in. I decided that I would start taking some classes online to kind of find out how to better help my, our citizens as a dispatcher. And I'm continuing doing some of those classes, just to see how I can continue to help our citizens. But when the job became available, I applied. I thought I wouldn't get the job, but I'm really excited about it, and I was hired September 3rd. So, I, as a victims' advocate, I've learned that a lot of people don't know what I do. I thought that everyone knew what a victim advocate did, but they don't. So, I'm just going to quickly recap what I do, and then I have some statistics, as well as some things that we're going to proceed with in the next year, in 2017. So, I assist the citizens that have been involved in traumatic incidents. This could involve domestic violence, protective order violations, stalking injunctions, suicides, sexual assaults, sudden deaths, anything of a traumatic nature. And I go out on anything that my officers call me on. I am 24/7 service. So, I don't sit in the office 24/7, but I do now carry two phones, which is fun, and I am on-call 24/7. So, many times, we have victims, and they're not aware of the different resources that are available to them. They have no idea where to go after, basically, let's use domestic violence as a, an incident. They don't know where to go, they don't know what services are provided. My job is to kind of be a one-stop shopping place, so I can give them advice. I, well, I don't give them advice, I show them different resources, I comfort them, I try to listen to them, and they, together with me, look over different resources, and they decide where they'd like to go. I never tell a victim where to go, and, and what they need to be doing with their lives. I let them choose. But a lot of times, they don't know anything about protective orders, restraining orders, victim reparations, housing. There are, you know, employment, legal services, just different things that a lot of times they can't afford after they've been victimized. They are, a lot of times, really afraid to go somewhere, or are told that they cannot be, live without their abuser. So, they believe that. And I've seen that firsthand now quite a bit. I thought that this would be like, you know, every once in a while, we'd get a, something, you know, an involvement, and I'd be like, oh, I'll help out. And no, it's, we're, I'm pretty busy. So, together, we kind of go over a checklist to make things not seem so overwhelming. When I go out on a suicide or a sudden death, I also give them resources like mortuaries and cemeteries, and we go over a checklist of kind of what they can do to not make it so overwhelming, because sometimes, especially with a sudden death, they are very overwhelmed. And it's nice to have somebody to go through a checklist with them. Sometimes, they don't get too excited about it, but I've been very welcomed, and it's been, it's been a good eye-opener for me. So, in Pleasant Grove, domestic violence is the most prevalent crime. Victims are contacted, we, I try to contact them within 24 hours, three days is my max. And that would be like a weekend, or if I can't get ahold of the victim, and I try and try, which happens. I just try to answer their questions and make sure that they have the resources they need. I help them fill out the protective orders if they need me to, as well as stalking injunctions that, that get filed with the Fourth District Court. And I also will go in court, go to court in lieu of the victim, because many times, they're afraid to go and see their, the accused. So, sometimes, if they want me to go with them, I have gone to court with them also, even Clair de Provost, you know, which isn't that far, but... So, some of the stats, since August 31st of this year, to date, we've had 13 domestic violences. We've had several more reported, but 13 that I can say are actual domestic violence. Four sexual assaults, three protective order violations, two internet sex crimes, two stalking injunctions. My fourth day working as a victim advocate, I was called out on a suicide, and I was so scared, I was just like, please don't let me ugly cry. Anyway, I went out to help Highland, their victim advocate was not available, and she was out of town, and as well as a lot of the victim advocates, I guess, decided to go on vacation during that week. So, the newbie here went out, and that was a really eye-opening experience. And it was really neat to be able to help that family. So, I have gone out on one other death, and I have numerous walk-in clients. So, there are days when I go in and have a really big agenda in front of me, and I end up spending the entire day with, sometimes with one victim for three hours. So, filling out stalking injunctions and things like that, which I, I filled out my first stalking injunction with a victim last week. I've helped with five protective orders that have gone to the courts. There are some that are still in progress. Anyway, and one thing that surprised me as a victim advocate is the sexual assault crimes. I've read through all of them. I, that is part of my job, is kind of knowing what happens, so that I know how to give the state of Utah the statistics that we need. The thing that surprised me about the sexual assaults is just the age in some of them. It just showed me that our youth are highly affected by being aggressors and being perpetrators. And I was very surprised by that. I think there's a lot that comes into play with the age, and just kind of what happens in their lives that make them an aggressor. And that kind of shocked me. So, that's my most shocking thing so far, even over the suicide. Pleasant Grove is involved in the Utah County, the Northern Utah County Task Force. This is a collaborating task force where we partner with Lehigh, Linden, Saratoga Springs, American Fork, the Utah County Sheriff's Office. As this task force, we all organize a training, one per quarter, and we are the person, you know, like Pleasant Grove will be in charge of one of the trainings, Saratoga will be in charge of another training, and we pick a different topic, and we try to have some case reviews and talk about different ways that we can deal with it, city to city. A lot of times... A lot of times, our city will see the same perpetrator or victim as another city. And so it's really nice if we can do things the exact way, straight across the board, city to city. And it helps us train and educate each other and learn and um, use best practices for our victims. And so basically this next year, we have some goals. I've been speaking with the chief as well as lieutenant and our detectives. And what we would like to do is we're really gonna focus on um, the domestic violence, since that is the most prevalent crime. And we are going to try to educate the youth, the, you know, females, males, adults, basically on the different dating violence and domestic violence and, and what is accept, like, that it's not acceptable. To try and have, keep them from having to come see me. And I think the education power is power, you know, knowledge is power. Um, and that's what we'd like to do this year, is really focus on that. Um, we're also, uh, the chief and I are working on something as a "we believe you." So if there is a sexual assault, when someone comes into our department, they can tell us what happened and we, we believe them, we listen. And that's really important because a lot of people are really afraid to report a sexual assault because they don't feel that they'll be believed. And chief and I are really big on, we want our department to be known as one that is a "we believe you" department.
Is that a nationwide program?
This is a program. We're gonna kind of piggyback off of it, so that will be nice. It's, it's already in place, but we haven't really put it into place at the department. And so we're lucky that that's, we're gonna kind of add to it or do what we wanna do that works best for Pleasant Grove. But we really wanna do this. It's really important to, I mean, I, I hear stories all the time that they're afraid and they didn't dare come talk to somebody and they, you know, and then they become, I mean, there's, they become victims over and over again, which is really difficult. Um, also, my focus is, I, I really believe passionately in suicide prevention. And I want to help with that as much as I can, um, getting resources out to the public. Or when a suicide happens, we do go out and I, I do give packets and resources to the families and the victims, um, so that they can go to different, you know, they can find maybe support groups or places that they can go. And so that's kind of what I do and I love it. It's a little bit intimidating at times, but I feel like it's a wonderful job and I really do love the people that I serve, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Does anybody have any questions?
Kim, while you're here. Preface it with a little bit of a story. I don't normally do any kind of work in domestic violence in my law office, but today I actually had a, a conversation with a pro bono client who was a victim of domestic violence in Salt Lake County. And uh, one of the things you said that I loved was that uh, you never tell a citizen what they have to do, never tell a person what they have to do. This woman that was talking to me today uh, was prosecuted. She was at a battered shelter, battered women's shelter, I guess is what we call them historically, but she was staying at one for a while and was pressured to give up the name of the, of the perpetrator and refused to, and then got prosecuted with a felony charge for that. And uh, and I'm wondering if that's common practice, if that happens here in Utah County, if that, do you have expectations of victims?
I'm fairly new.
To press charges? Maybe Brit knows something about that. I'm just curious. It's the first I'd ever heard of a, of a victim being required to press charges.
I, when I work with a victim, I don't require them to do anything. There are times when I have had people come in and say, what do I do about this, you know, can I, and they haven't reported it to the police. And there are times when I'm like, you know, in order to get a protective order in place, or a stalking injunction, or anything of that nature, it's nice to, to have that on file because it's harder, as you know, as an attorney, it's harder to get that in place if they don't have an incident or something involved in the history, um, that's documented. So sometimes they might be encouraged to do that. I always give, my victims are all, I, I tell them all the time, I'm not legal service. I'm not a counselor. I definitely listen. I think they think I'm a counselor many times. I had a lady put her feet all over my furniture last week. But I think that they, they think that. Um, but I will just give them the resources. And then I will go through the different resources with them. And if they have a question that I can't answer, I will contact those places so that I can make sure that I understand the resources as well. And, but I, I never tell them what to do. I never, I never, I don't really advise. I just say, well, I can't advise you on this, but I can tell you that these are great resources. I think you might like this. So I'm kind of careful with my wording when I speak with a victim. Um, they take things pretty literally, a lot of times, because they, they don't know any other way. They think, oh, she just said that to me and that means, that's in a bible right now. So I'm careful.
That's awesome.
Is there any?
No, I, I just, I'm grateful for the good work you do. It was the first time I'd ever heard of a victim being prosecuted for refusing to press charges. And so it's part of the reason I took her case, but I think it's awesome what you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. I do know, I do know that when you do go to court, it is, you know, it's hard for the victim. They, the other attorney, I went to court this week in Provo, and the other attorney will pull out every stop they can, as well as the perpetrator who wants to make sure that that victim, the process either drags on forever and ever. Or they wanna, you know, show control and, and grasp onto that. Um, and they will, sometimes it's difficult. So they need that support, but I would never tell her she had to do that. So, and I, the officers, I, you know, I, working with officers, I've never seen, seen them say, you have to give me this name. Even as a dispatcher, when they call in, if they say, you know, I don't wanna give you my name, I don't wanna give you my address. We don't take, we put anonymous and we put the police department's address. So I think we try really hard at Pleasant Grove to honor our victims' wishes, as well as anyone that is um, giving us information. I mean, we do see a phone number that pops up, but that doesn't tell us who's calling, especially on a, a non-landline, on a cellphone. We have no idea who it is. So when people call, they wonder why we don't know their name and their address and their phone number immediately. We don't. So we try to respect those wishes.
Thanks. It's awesome what you do, Kim. Thank you.
Any other questions? Wait, I have one. So uh,
All right.
Yeah. Um, so is there an inter-local agreement where if a dispatcher in one town is not, like, how do you know that there is a need in American Fork or Long Peak if there, if that victim's advocate is not there? How are you?
So,
How does this work?
With the suicide, I can tell you how that works.
Well, so even with victims?
With a victim?
Yes.
Um, we were without a victim's advocate for a little bit, um, at our department, while they were in the process of hiring. And what happens is when we receive a call for a victim, we try to find someone that's local that can come and help our department. So it basically is like an agency assist, which an officer would go out and help Linden do a, you know, a detail. Um, we, we get a call, like with the suicide, I got a call, uh, or my, my, it was a corporal that was there, um, in lieu of a sergeant that day. And he came in and said, I received a phone call from a sergeant in, you know, a different town. Can you go out and assist with this, um, family with this suicide? So our police officers work really well together. And generally, the police officer will be the person that requests the victim, the victim advocate. And so if they don't have one in their city that's available, they call whatever city they can. And this day, it just happened to be that they were all gone and Kimberly got the call. And so I just went on it. So we, they work, our agencies all work, I think, pretty well together. And that's kind of what we're trying to do, is continue that, the best practices for our cities to become a city to city. You know, so we have that connection and that collaboration.
And uh, I would just ask the, the little 16-year-old, the part of me would just beg that every girl at the high school knew what to do.
That's what we're working on, just so you know. That's definitely part of the presentation that we want to, to start. It has a lot to do with the, um, the adolescents and, and what they know.
Just the step, just like, okay, so this just happened, what, what happens now?
And I know, like with suicide, we have the Hope Squad and different things at the high school that's implemented. But with like domestic and dating violence, um, you know, I work with people of all ages. And even today, I was surprised at the age of one of my victims that has a child. So it is very important to educate the youth.
Okay, and then what do males do?
I have worked with a male.
Okay.
So males are definitely allowed to come in and seek services as well. He's one of the people that I got a dating protective, um, protective violence, or protective order, sorry. Dating violence protective order, if I can talk. Um, he is one of the people that, that qualified for the dating protective violence.
Okay.
Violence protective order. I can't say that one.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what happened to Becca? Where is she now?
She went to Linden. She is the chief's assistant in Linden. And we miss her and she had a cute office, but mine's getting cuter by the day, so.
Thanks, Kim.
I'm working on it with my own funds, by the way, just so.
Let's make sure we clarify. That'll be on Facebook later, so.
All right. Um, all right, we'll move on. Nine A. Uh, we'll turn the time over to Director Young.
Okay, this first item is a, basically a housekeeping cleanup item. We have a plat, uh, or a property that uh, was uh, kind of in between two different uh, developments or subdivisions as they came forward. And so this is identifying in the R120 zone, the property owned by the Bjarnsons. And you'll see on this uh, map, just a very small sliver on the eastern boundary there that uh, has not previously been included in either the plat that the Bjarnsons property's in here, or the one adjacent to it. There was some mapping error in the past that has come to light.
Ken, where, where are we in town?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't have any coordinates here.
So this is uh, 1243 East Hillside Drive.
Where is Hillside?
You're, you're up at about, what is that, 1500 north, where?
No, 15th, 13th East. Okay.
Yeah, so Grove Creek is
West of that?
Is east. Grove Creek.
Well, the flood control dam is to the north of her property or so. She's about 350 north, 1300 east in that vicinity. North of uh, Walker Grove Plat B, those new developments going on there.
Got it.
All right. Okay, so this aerial shows uh, their home and an accessory garage. Uh, they, they're trying to build another accessory uh, building that has, when they came forward for approval for that, that that's when we realized we had a property line, uh, boundary problem here. So it's just that sliver that's in yellow that is uh, needing to be combined with the rest of the property. So it's not affecting any neighboring properties, uh, or any other plats. So uh, we're just asking that um, this plat be approved, uh, Crystal View Estates Plat C, which will just bring that little sliver piece into uh, her property. Then, then we don't have a setback problem for her accessory structure.
All right. And uh, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to uh, um, speak on this issue. Do we have the, is the applicant here? Okay. Um, did you wanna add anything to what Ken said? Housekeeping. Anyone here? All right. So we'll bring it back up to here. Um, any comments? All right, go for it, Eric.
So I was ready, huh? Okay. Mayor Protem, I make a motion for approval of a one-lot final plat called Crystal View Estates Plat C, located approximately 1243 East Hillside Drive in the R120 Single Family Residential Zone, Grove Creek neighborhood.
All right, we have a motion by Eric. A second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, look at us just moving. All right, now, so you know Kathy, we're gonna just sign all of these later. All right, so now we make a motion to continue uh, this one, this next one.
I'll make the mo, motion, Mayor Protem, that we continue the public hearing for adoption of an ordinance 2016-22, amending city code being in compliance with recent state code updates. Section 10-15-23 Residential Facilities for People with a Disability, Adjusting the Number of Residents Per Facility, and Section 10-6-2, continued. Is this the indefinite one, Scott?
Yep.
Indefinitely.
Yes. I'll second it.
Sorry, should've asked you.
All right, a motion by Ben, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item is continued indefinitely. Um, all right, uh, C. This is a, do you want me to read what it is before it?
Tiny homes.
I know, but did, did,
Yes.
But for the record, do, do you want me to read it before?
Yeah, usually we do.
Yeah, I know, but usually do we do, but do you want me to?
Two different questions, Scott.
Yeah, just everybody in the room knows what you're talking about.
All right. Uh, this is uh, nine C, Public Hearing to Consider for Adoption and Ordinance 2016-23, Amending City Code, Section 10-15-47, to include the construction or installation of tiny homes as accessory apartments in all zones where residential use is allowed. And we'll turn the time over to Director Young.
Okay, so tiny homes is uh, more of a recent, popular topic, and it's not something that many cities, especially in Utah, yeah, that's got a HGTV uh, show. And it has, it's something that most of the Utah communities are not uh, prepared in their code to regulate. And so there are a lot of uh, communities that are beginning to look at that. Uh, I must say, I think we're kind of out on the forefront uh, with, with what's coming forward, uh, with other cities. Not necessarily because we chose to, but for some reason, we were bombarded with some requests uh, to, to look at that. And so since we had just barely done our accessory apartments ordinance, and within that ordinance, it allows for accessory structures to be used as residential units. Uh, we felt like it wasn't a big stretch for us to go to say, well, tiny homes can be used as accessory structures for an accessory apartment. Um, the, the initial request that we got was, we would like to bring in a tiny home onto our property and, and rent it out, or let family members live there, whatever. But a tiny home by the normal definition that you see on HGTV or, or other places, it's more of a mobile unit. It, it's on a, uh, undercarriage, it's got wheels so that it can be moved on and off the lot. And um, that is uh, kind of the popular way of having a tiny home.
Right.
There are some challenges and some difficulties that we find with our zoning ordinance to allow for that type of a thing. There are those people who would love to have a tiny home neighborhood. In other words, a glorified RV park. Uh, we don't have any zoning that permits that. Uh, I'm not sure that we would be interested in that kind of zoning or that kind of development. Um, and I, and we found through the process in working with the applicants, working with the planning commission, working with uh, the city attorney, Tina's looked at it quite a bit. Daniel, our city planner, spent a lot of time researching what other communities in the nation are doing on this. And also what some of the issues are and reasons why to do this or not to do that. Uh, ultimately, what we did come up with is um, a recommendation that if we do allow these, we do not allow them as mobile units. We allow them only as permanent foundation-type units, which is very similar, if not the same thing, as what currently is permitted under our ordinance to build a little cottage in the back of your home. All this means is it's being pre-manufactured somewhere else, brought in perhaps on a carriage and wheels, but that that needs to be removed from that and placed upon a permanent foundation. So with that, I'll just kind of review where we're at. Here are just a few pictures. Where we, we actually have a contractor in town that builds tiny homes. And most of his units are, well, they are all on wheels and they're sent elsewhere where they're permitted to, to do that. Um, another, here's another picture of a tiny home, uh, which tends, well, it is required uh, that they have all types of facilities within a very small space. So in other words, they have
Is that, is that for a golf cart?
Motorcycle.
Oh.
So they'll have um, eating and sleeping and sanitation facilities. Uh, so you have just one large room, maybe two rooms, uh, for, to have everything in there. Sometimes it includes a loft. Uh, so we require in our ordinance currently that um, any accessory unit or accessory apartment dwelling would have to have its own separate eating, sleeping, and sanitation facilities. So um, what we're saying with this picture is, uh, just drawing that arrow saying, no, we won't take the, the carriage, undercarriage and the wheels. You gotta remove those and just place it on a permanent foundation. So I'll, I'll review what So I'll review what has been proposed to Planning Commission and with their unanimous recommendation coming forward to you for approval is that we first define what a tiny home is according to our code. And so what that is, is tiny homes, a single-family subordinate dwelling which has its own eating, sleeping, and sanitation facilities within a detached accessory structure with a minimum area of 192 square feet, attached to a permanent foundation and permanently connected to all required utilities.
Why 192?
Well, 192 is a common size. So what we looked at is there are some that are smaller.
Okay.
But as far as having it functional with all the types of eating, sleeping, sanitation facilities, it was a common, very small size. So that seems to work. And so that's after research, that's what we came up with. You'll find some that are slightly over 100 square feet to around 500 square feet. But 192, we felt, was a comfortable minimum size. Now, mostly that's regulated by when they move these things, they have them on the undercarriage and stuff. And so they're taking them down a one-lane road. They need to have it narrow enough. And so unless it's super long, the square footage is going to be quite small.
Got it.
Okay, so that's the proposed definition. The proposed section to be added to the accessory apartments ordinance has several provisions, and I'll read those. Only one tiny home shall be permitted as an accessory apartment per residential lot. The tiny home shall be permanently connected to and approved for all required utilities. The tiny home dwelling structure must be attached to a site-built permanent foundation which meets the building code. The type of foundation could be a slab-on-grade or a perimeter foundation. Building inspections are required for construction of the foundation as well as to ensure the correct installation of the structure and to approve correct connection to the utilities. All manufactured home running gear, tongues, axles, and wheels must be removed at the time of installation. The dwelling structure shall be constructed with materials that are weather-resistant and aesthetically consistent with the main dwelling. The community development director may approve deviations from the architectural standards on the basis of finding that the architectural style proposed provides compensation design features and that the proposed dwelling will be compatible and harmonious with existing structures in the vicinity. And finally, the parking shall be the same as City Code 101547J, which is the same accessory apartments requirement. So with that, again, the... There was a public hearing held at Planning Commission. Several comments in favor were made at that meeting and they did unanimously recommend approval of this.
So is this a developer coming forward that wants to sell these or is this residents that want to buy them?
So resident that is the applicant for this proposal. We did have others that have spoken to us and asked, "Are you gonna do something?" But we did have one particular application come forward. They do have space in their backyard where they would like to have their son, who is wanting to purchase one of these and have it installed. So it would be, in this instance, a family member, but it could, in other instances, be just as an accessory dwelling unit that would be rented.
Okay.
And in the packet, it says a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. Was that a unanimous vote?
The applicant is here tonight if you would like to.
Okay, I do... There are some other cities, I think in Utah, that have taken this on, right? And I think it ranges, right? Some actually are actually trying to zone them out and some are like us, are looking at it at a little positive aspect of it, so I don't...
Right, so I think the traditional view or the common type of tiny home is just that it is a mobile home. And I think that's where most people are saying no. But it is our approach to do it on a permanent foundation connected to permanent utilities, which really doesn't make it much different than what we already permit with an accessory cottage or something.
Yep.
So can the tiny home be to the side of the home or does it have to be in the back?
It... An accessory structure can be in the side of the home if they have sufficient space, but it'd have to be behind the front yard area. But normally, that doesn't occur on the side yard because side yards aren't wide enough to allow for that. So it would normally be the rear yard.
And same with like a 25-foot setback or would that be more if it was in a side yard?
Well, an accessory structure has a different setback.
Okay.
So depending on the height and the size of the structure, it can be closer to the rear yard fence line or property line. But again, it depends on how tall and how big the facility is.
And very similar to accessory buildings, would that just... Would they come to Planning Commission to get a permit and with a site plan and all that kind of stuff?
Only if it exceeds the height limitation would it come to Planning Commission for conditional use approval. Otherwise, this is put in as a permitted use if they meet this criteria.
Got it.
And just like accessory apartments, like we talked about, we could revisit this, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's true. As always. All right.
Question, Ken. I'm looking at number four here. It talks about the building inspections required for the foundation. Are there any kind of national standards or construction standards? Because they're manufactured outside of our city. We don't actually inspect the structure itself. Is that what I'm gathering from number four?
Right, and I think number six goes along with that. The dwelling structure shall be constructed with materials that are weather-resistant and aesthetically consistent with the main dwelling. I think between those two, so we're not regulating all types of... Well, we are. It will have to pass what we would otherwise consider approvable under our building code. So it does have its own type of development criteria, but we will look at that to make sure that it falls under our guidelines.
I guess I'm not sure that's as explicit as maybe it ought to be in the language of the code.
Well, the problem is when it's manufactured outside of our city, we don't have the opportunity to inspect the construction as it's developed. So it is a little bit different situation. We have to feel comfortable with it as it's being placed and everything. At that point, we'll have to make a determination if it's good to go.
I'm just wondering if there's some kind of a certification or a standard where we can say this has a seal of approval from this particular manufacturer or something that we could ask to see at the time of installation? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I don't know if there's an across-the-board type of certification that works for all types. I mean, I think each manufacturer may have their own certification or whatever or warranty with those types of units. But I'm not sure if there's something that we can put into place that would cover all types of tiny homes that are built in different locations.
Okay, thanks. I'm seeing some hands and some people that are nodding. Maybe we could have... There's gonna be a public hearing in a moment. If you guys could come up and kind of explain that, that might be helpful for us. Thanks, Ken.
I think we're ready for the public hearing. Unless anybody has any other questions for Ken. We good? Okay. All right, we'll open up the public hearing portion. So if you want to say something, just come to the mic and just state your name and then we'll just go from there.
Hi, my name is Jamin Scott. I'm with Tiny Villa. I spent the last two years promoting tiny homes in Utah County. There's a couple of things that I'd like to provide. One, here's a list of communities throughout the United States that currently have approved tiny home on permanent foundation as part of their community. Last one on the list is Washington County, Utah. So... There's some links on some of them to websites. Most of those have similar outline guidelines as to what's been stated here. Size limitations, compliances. They vary slightly by size and variety of things. But it's very similar. It follows very similar to what you looked at here. You would be pioneers in Utah with this.
I love that.
But you can often tell the pioneers because they're the one with the arrows in their backs. But you're not pioneers.
And they actually all had tiny homes.
Yes.
Like 12 kids in a tiny home.
Exactly, yeah. So... But it is moving, you know, very quickly forward in all parts of the United States. So you don't have to feel like you're out there on your own. And these web links that are there, you know, they do have some interesting aspects of how they implement in their local areas. The second thing I'd like to bring up is with regard to inspection and consistency, many of these communities subscribe to a standard that is called NOAA. It stands for National Organization of Alternative Housing. It's a group that was launched in January 1st of this year. There... I'll go ahead and pass this out to you here. It says it's a national trade association providing nationwide inspection and certification services for builders of tiny houses and membership for businesses offering products and services for the tiny house industry. NOAA certification is available for builds by manufacturers, education organizations, and institutions. Since its founding, NOAA has become widely recognized as an industry leader providing support to its member builders and municipalities at both local and state levels across the nation. NOAA certification provides independent third-party credibility, confidence, and peace of mind for consumers, builders, lenders, and insurers. So there's, you know, some aspects of this certification that have very real impact on the owner of the unit. Just kind of really quickly... Is that me? So very quickly, the certification process is done by a app that you put on your mobile phone. And so as you inspect the house, the inspectors are on the other side of the app and they move through the house and do that type of thing, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kim Redford. I'm the applicant. I'm the face of the tiny house nation, at least at my house. And I never in a thousand years thought I would be standing up here doing this, but I have a son who's 21. He works about 70, 80 hours a week doing an LDS service mission at the Bishop's storehouse and then also works at Smith's. He wants some independence and he has been wanting to do this. He's been saving his money and has the money to pay for this. And so the trick has been just trying to find a place. And so we have been looking for actually a couple of years to try and get something and just have not been able to find anything. So we found out in February about your accessory units and I actually talked with Director Hanson and he was really wonderful and said, "You know, we may even consider that." We hooked up with Daniel Cardenas and he's been just really helpful in just getting everything squared away. And it's been a really, a great group effort in trying to do this. So I just want to, you know, all of this is great and wonderful, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the kinds of people that want tiny homes. You know, it's not all the HGTV people. It's normal people like me that have a son who may need to be close by and just but have some space of their own. And maybe some people, maybe it may be grandparents that come to live with their kids or a grandma who comes to live with her kids and just says, "This is so wonderful to live with you guys, but I am so done with your children and I would love to have my own little tiny house where I could go and just, you know, just do something like that." It may be a mom my age who, maybe somebody who's divorced or something like that, that would just like to be close to the kids yet still have their autonomy. And that seems to be, you know, that seems to be a good portion of people that want to do something like this. You know, this initially... Ah, 58 seconds. This wasn't initially what we wanted, but we are so happy with this and that you guys would even consider this. And the Planning Commission, you know, doing it unanimously, I'm so thankful. Whatever the decision is, I am just very thankful for your openness and being willing to consider something like this and being pioneers in Utah in this respect. So, thank you.
Thanks. Hey, Kim, let me ask a quick question if I may. Just totally out of my own curiosity, what's the typical cost of a tiny home and installing it?
It depends. They can be, depending on, you know, if they've got special toilets that are combustible toilets and you have a little cup and... Incinerates, you know, that kind of a thing.
It's always a good word for a toilet.
So none of that would apply here because we would be hooked indirectly. So, I mean, some costs can be $30,000 to $40,000 or even higher depending on what you put inside. And so that's a consideration. So my son's been saving and he has the money to do this and just wants to do this. I've tried to dissuade him and get him to buy a little property with a yard, but his generation, you know, there's a lot... They're downsizers. They're people that want to live more frugally and...
Small carbon footprint.
Small carbon, they're minimalist. I mean, this is a kid who could put all his stuff in probably three grocery bags and call it good. And so, anyway.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's great.
Thank you.
All right. I'm on the other side of the...
Say the name again.
Marion Lamb.
Okay.
I'm on the other side of the spectrum. This is a big spreading thing for seniors. In fact, out east, they're spreading like wildfire and they're calling them granny pods. And they can be modified for any need that a elderly person might have. Modify things like stoves that turn off by themselves. Everything can be arranged so that they can stay in a home much longer than going into some kind of a facility. But I've been excited about this idea for some time and especially since I have friends who are actually living in them. And I'm excited about the idea of being on a permanent foundation. I hope that maybe eventually we can move toward communities of these homes. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff, I'm Kim's husband. And when we went and met with the gentleman in Salt Lake City for the tiny home construction, one of the guys who's a builder, I asked him some of the questions and I wanted to get to that, what you were saying. And that they adhere to the national electrical codes and the plumbing codes, the roofing codes and so that... And the insulation, the two-by-four outer walls with insulation in them and, you know, everything wired properly to code. And so I was specific about that because we wanted to make sure that it's safe, that, you know, so it's not gonna burn down because it was faulty wiring or whatever, that they wire them to code so that... And they put smoke detectors in. I mean, they're all in there wired in, you know, for whatever rooms there are, however many rooms there, they have a smoke detector, except the kitchen, of course. And anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that they do build...
They are code.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Wong. I am a professor at UVU and I just bought a home in the Garden Grove, so can officially say I'm a Pleasant Grove resident. So when we heard, the tiny home community heard that Pleasant Grove is gonna be like the cool kid of Utah County and Salt Lake County by allowing tiny homes, I was so excited. I've been looking forward to living in one for about seven years, but I had to convince my family first that I wasn't crazy. And so my plan right now, my tiny home is gonna cost me about $100,000. So this is gonna be already made. It's gonna be like a higher-end one with a full kitchen, full bathroom. I am... I wanted to live on the grid because I don't wanna have to like wash my beautiful extensions and run out of water. And I wanted to be close to Costco, so I wanted to be in a residential neighborhood. So I just kind of wanted to provide a face of who's gonna be living in one. I'm planning to buy a property for my mom, who's a senior, and hopefully we can like find a farmhouse that has like a small farmhouse with a large lot, maybe a third of an acre to a half an acre. And I would live in the tiny house in the back because I'm a minimalist and I hate stuff. So we went to the Tiny House Jamboree in Colorado. We've been researching this for years. We just need a place to park it. We are willing to put it on a foundation. We're not planning on going anywhere with it. We just wanna live simply and smallly and enjoy more of life and less of stuff. So we appreciate... We wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Young and the planning committee who's been helping us with our proposal and all these things. There are a lot of things to take into consideration. We understand that, but I feel like this is the right place and the right time to do a project like this. And we have one minute until the trap door closes.
Oh, thank you for coming.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks, Cynthia.
All right.
Hi, I wasn't planning on saying anything. I'm Jennifer Gilbert.
I'm Jennifer Gilbert. You actually have a manufacturer here in Pleasant Grove?
Yes.
Upper Valley Tiny Homes. Okay, good. Didn't know if you knew that. I'm kind of in the same situation, you know, divorced, got a son that I'd like to, first will live in a tiny home, then build a second one for him so he can have that independence that he needs. He's autistic and has Tourette's. And so it's hard to be able to afford anything. We're living in not great conditions and sometimes there's no other choice. So it'd be really nice to have something like this available finally here in Utah. And that's all.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, Jennifer and Ken, the way the ordinance is crafted, our tiny homes have to be subordinate to a normal residence. And so you can't have a tiny home on the back of another tiny home. It's going to have to be a primary residence, a traditional residence, under this code. But just for point of curiosity, if it ever comes up.
Okay.
My name's Kenna Matthews. I'm the director at Habitat for Humanity here in Utah County. I just wanted to come and show our support for the tiny home ordinance here in Pleasant Grove. We see people every day that aren't, portable housing is a challenge here in our community and we're lacking about 13,000 units of just housing for people here. And I believe that this is a great opportunity, especially for seniors, couples, single people, to have a place to live, have an affordable place to live. So we just wanted to throw our support behind that today. Thank you.
Kenna, Joe, you are everywhere. And thank you for all you do.
My name is Joseph Hauck. I just came as a visitor today. I'm actually in Provo and I just really appreciate the sentiment, the goodwill being expressed. I mean, we think about the movement, what we can do for the poor, what we can do for the rich, what, how can we meet the middle, right? Benefits of homeownership, homeowners. A homeowner's net worth is 45.9 times that of renters, right? They're likely to stay in their community much longer, 16 years, you know, as compared to the average. We look at a lot of statistics, this could be a really good thing, a really progressive thing, a really liberating thing for so many people on so many levels. You know, having been and trying to also have homeownership myself as a single male adult, it can be very frustrating. You know, you look at plots of land and what they cost and the total cost of a home. It's, you know, 250,000 on average, right? 200,000. And what we do as a community to help those that are in need, it really says a lot about us too as well, while still maintaining the things that are necessary for those who have, right? People who need it. I think this could be a really good thing, not just for Pleasant Grove, but could really set a really good example of what do we do as a community for everybody? Because everybody lives here, not just some people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on over to Pleasant Grove from Provo.
Oh, I would. If you guys feel like tiny home community, boom.
We don't have any space, really.
My name is Rosalie Curtis and I moved to Pleasant Grove a few years ago and my daughter is turning 20 years old this month. She has tried to move out on her own already. She saved up several thousands of dollars to move out and we helped her move to Washington State and she became homeless. She just barely got back to town and she wants her independence, she wants to be able to keep her cats. And we want that for her too. And we've been helping her, trying to help her find a place to live around here. And it is rough out there. When I was 18 years old, I was able to buy my first home. I had no problems my whole life renting. My daughter, this, the culture, the economy that we're in now, it's next to impossible for the young people, but we don't want them to be at home forever. And it would also be nice to have them, if there's a tiny house there, as the parents age, they can still take care of us, you know? We can stay in our house. So anyways, I'm really excited about this and I really, really hope that it, because I'm going to build one. That's a question I had, is do we have to have it manufactured or can we build it ourselves?
So as long as it's up to code? So the fact that you're on a foundation and so...
Well, I'm behind this 100%.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
I'm Mariah Skeen. I've been living here for about a year in Pleasant Grove. I live in my brother's basement because rent is expensive. I have an emotional support animal and so finding rent anywhere that's like reasonable is really difficult. And I just really don't want roommates. Being 25, I have a master's degree. I don't have any crippling student loan debt, but I still can't afford a house. So housing market is just difficult to maneuver, difficult to just find someplace that is acceptable. A lot of the housing that is affordable, whether it be in Utah County or Salt Lake County, is extremely rundown and very small, but not quite as tiny as I would like it to be. So I just, I really would look forward to the opportunity to be able to stay in Pleasant Grove and to have a smaller footprint and to have my own space and to be able to stay in the city. I exercise in the city. I buy my groceries in the city. You know, I don't contribute a lot as far as property taxes and stuff like that go, but I would love to be able to contribute the other things that I contribute to the city. And living in my brother's basement just isn't a very long-term solution for that. So I would love to be out of the house. In the backyard is just fine because then I won't have three children running around and screaming above my head or toilets being flushed over my kitchen and things like that. So, kind of on the same page as everyone else here, I'm in huge support of this. It's a great opportunity for me as a millennial to be able to build some equity and to have something that I can maybe think about retiring on or in, rather than, you know, kind of being stuck in this renter's cycle, because it is pretty brutal. I've been working full-time for three years now and like I said, I still can't afford a house and I don't have car payments or student loan debt. So anyway, we're not all just crazy spenders that just want to vagabond around the world and anyway, I'd love to stay here and this is a great option. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of pet do you have, Mariah?
I have a cordon.
Hi, my name's Naomi Nelson. Just wanted to show support. Tiny home is something that I would like to have the option of doing on our property as a granny pod, as mentioned. Possibly we have all our family out of state. It would be nice to have a separate space where they could come stay on a temporary time, but have it a permanent structure. Also, if it would be considered in the future, a tiny home development, I would be, I would consider selling my home and moving into a tiny home development with my whole family. That is something that I have looked to see if is available and as we know, isn't. And would definitely consider in the future and would love to stay in Pleasant Grove and have that opportunity.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Jason Workman of Provo, but I came because I've been involved in, with the builder, he's been building tiny homes and he has a bunch of different designs. He's also been able to come up with some, there's a lot of really cool things that can happen with tiny homes. He's created a building system that you can start with the walls of the tiny home and then you can expand it on a, he has foundation blocks that can be used permanently, but they can also be, so it's all really versatile. But what he can do is he can add to it once it's paid off. And his starter homes, the first one was like 25,000. I just want to, sorry, make awareness to it. There's never been a place to put these and so our sales were not able to, his companies have never been able to make it in this sector, this company that he started lately because there was just no place for it. So same thing, I don't know, I just have a lot more things I could talk about, but the ability to have a grow home, as he calls it, where it could start out as a small home, but if people wanted to add to it, they could grow.
Okay. Oh, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. Are we ready to bring it back up here? Kay.
Diane. I'd just like to add to the clarification that Ben said earlier, that this is only for accessory structures to a larger main dwelling on a lot, but also to understand that this is part of the accessory apartment ordinance which requires that the main dwelling or the accessory unit be owner-occupied. So that we don't end up having two rental units on one property.
Yes.
And also that there cannot be two separate owners on one property. So that there's not, unless it's within the same family group. But you can't sell a portion of your property to have the accessory structure on.
Subdivide.
Right, you know, subdividing there. So, and/or condominiumizing, which would be the only way to do that. So it all has to be owned by the same owner.
Owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied.
Thank you, Ken. All right, anything anybody wants to bring up?
I think we've had a lot. Thank you for everyone that showed tonight. We had some good comments and good insight, so appreciate it.
I just want to comment, for anybody that's ever lived in Asia or Europe, they invented this a long time ago. So we're just catching up. I love to go to IKEA and just say, "Hmm, 800 square feet." And I go home to my house that I need to throw everything away. Anyway. Any other comments?
No, I just echo the sentiment. It's awesome. We don't often have this much public comment. It's great to see if people show up in large numbers and support an idea like this.
When they do, usually when they come, they are yelling at us. So this was very nice. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Ready.
Okay, let's go.
Make a motion for adoption of ordinance 2016-23, amending city code section 10-15-47 to include the construction or installation of tiny homes as accessory apartments on all zones where residential use is allowed.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, by voice. Gosh, she's getting specific with me now. No. I have to find it. All right. By voice, Diana, yes. Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
It is unanimous. And... You guys can leave.
Don't have to, you're welcome to stay.
Hey, it's only going to get better. We're here all night.
Or worse.
Wow, that's cool. So I'm like an avid watcher. I love the show. Okay, so this was motion by Eric.
I'll stop for a minute.
Second by Lynn. Huh?
No, nevermind. She has to run to the ladies' room.
Okay. What's going to take a second to clear out?
Yeah.
All right. And then I'm signing it right here. Look at us, just cruising. Send your... That's true. So looking at this little ball that's shooting up, do I have a privacy skirt here in front?
Yes. You do.
Women think about.
Were we breaking or were we...
I don't think we're, so it should...
I ran really quick, she'll be right back. Do we start now?
Start without her, like, all right. Okay, let me clean up. No, I don't need any more space. Okay, so that one's done. All right, we're going to keep moving here. We're going to move to item D. Public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance 2016-24, amending city code section 10-15-47, accessory apartments, adjusting the requirements regarding parking areas, specifically the materials approved for the construction of the parking spaces. And we will turn it over to Director Young.
So this is, we're still on accessory apartments ordinance here. So this is another issue regarding accessory apartments that we've been dealing with for a little while now. And I think we finally come up with a good resolution. However, we kind of had a last-minute adjustment to some of our verbiage. And so I'm not sure we're going to, I'm going to have Marty come up and explain some of his adjustments to what we had proposed. And if we feel that this is exceeding what has already gone through the process to planning commission and such, we may need to go back. But we thought we'd at least present to you what we have here tonight. So maybe with Marty, I'm just going to let you take it from there.
I was hoping Marty was going to bring samples.
What was provided in the staff report was largely correct with regards to the wording other than I added one sentence to the end. But I added some clarification to this because I thought it's important that as people are reading through this, that they have a better understanding of kind of the goals of what we're trying to accomplish with the parking and whether or not we allow a different type of a surface there. So let me, what I would like to do is just going to read through the report that we had a little miscommunication as far as what was modified and I wanted to make sure that we could review that real quick with you. So maybe it's just easiest kind of to read through here. In determining which types of materials are allowed to be used for the parking area of the accessory apartment, it is important to understand the goals of why a parking area should have a hard surface or compacted surface in the first place. The goals of a hard surface, hard surface, compact, hard surface or compacted surface parking area should be twofold. The parking area should provide a location for a vehicle to park where they will not track material, either fine material or gravels, into the street right of way. And number two, it should look aesthetically pleasing so as to not detract from the neighboring home. So we just don't want something that, you know, you get in there and it's a big mud hole, that's where everybody's parking, they're tracking out into the road. And those are the things that we're trying to accomplish with having a hard surface or something that you can park on. In order to accomplish these two goals, the main driveway of a home in front of a garage is already required by ordinance to be hard surface with either asphalt or concrete. The question lies in whether these two goals can be met with other compacted materials. So the request to add compacted materials to the types of materials that may be used for accessory apartment parking provides some flexibility to property owners and offers a less expensive way to meet the parking, I gotta scroll down on the other screen. To meet the parking requirements, the change only affects the additional parking space areas that are not connected to the street. Driveways and parking for the main dwelling unit shall be required to be surface with either pavement or concrete. So we're not changing the primary dwelling, the driveway, anything of that nature. It's only for the accessory parking area. It should be clarified that any compacted material that is not hard surface such as concrete or asphalt will inherently track. So somebody thinks that we're going to be able to come up with a material that does not have any tracking whatsoever, that's not going to work. You're going to have something tracking regardless of any material if it's not something that's just a hard surface material. The question comes into how, as to how much tracking would be allowed. It is the opinion of me, this is my opinion, that there are a number of materials that would be able to meet the criteria of low tracking and be a hard compacted surface if placed with a reasonable thickness and compacted. So a couple of those materials are slag or crushed granite. Slag is kind of a definition of the slag. This is a process of the, when you go through the refining process on metals, you have a refuse that comes off and they mill that down, they crush it, they... you have a refuse that comes off and they mill that down, they crush it, they make it really angular and it locks up really well and tight and creates a really nice hard surface. Few fines in it so that you don't see a lot of tracking with that. Do you still get ravelling on the top surface? Yes. Is it significant? Not generally. But there are, there is some of that that comes with that. Crushed granite's commonly used for trails and driveways. This is used throughout, you know, I've done a number of projects that have this for the trails and it makes a really nice trail. You can drive on them, you can drive your vehicles on them. Really nice and tight, compacted surface, whether it's wet or not. I don't know if you've been to Nielsen's Grove in Orem and walked on those trails. I believe that's crushed granite. We did one in Springville as well. It's just a common material. But there are other materials that may be acceptable as long as they're trying to meet the goals. And so these materials, an example of a material that is commonly used for driveways that does track and does not create a hard surface would be gravel. So I wanted to be clear on that, that gravel is not something that compacts. It ruts, it tracks, and is not something that we would recommend doing. So with that, essentially the change. So in addition to adding an option for compacted material, clarification is added, which requires the entire parking space to be covered. This will not allow for paving strips or other non-complete surface options. So it's not just the tire strips type of a concept, it's the entire parking area. And they're required to have two additional parking stall, parking spaces for the accessory apartment in order to have an accessory. So with that, the red, you can see the crossed out and the red portion of what is being proposed to be added. And that indicates that the minimum width of parking areas and driveways shall be paved with concrete or asphalt, except that space used for the accessory unit. Parking that is not directly connected to the street may be surfaced and with masonry, concrete, pavers, or as approved by the city engineer, compacted materials such as slag or crushed granite with a four inch minimum thickness placed in accordance with the American Public Works Association standard specifications. This would include only those materials which compact well and do not have small fine materials that could potentially be tracked into city right of ways. Surface pavement materials must cover the entire parking, entire area of all driveways and parking spaces. Any tracking that does not occur or that does occur will be the responsibility of the property owner to clean up and maintain, including cleaning of storm drain facilities if necessary. So those are some of the things that I felt were important to put in that ordinance because I think you will see a little bit of tracking happening. I think there is a way to feasibly come up with a solution, as long as it's hard, compact, not tracking. And if there are tracking issues, we do have someone that is, you know, our stormwater guy that goes out and checks that and will issue a citation if anybody, it doesn't matter if you're a resident or not. If you're coming from your backyard and you're tracking onto the street, you will be notified that that's not allowed. You need to get that cleaned up. This would be the same type of process, I would imagine, that if we do see that it is continually being a problem, they would be noticed and need to take care of the issue and make it so it doesn't track and clean it up. So.
Any questions for Marty?
The last sentence is the only thing that wasn't in your staff report.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Marty.
I would just like to add, it's my opinion, and we do have at least one planning commissioner here and she can express her opinion if she disagrees. But it's my opinion that this falls very generally into the same presentation and understanding that was given to the planning commission, although there's some clarifying verbiage. It doesn't change the intent of what was presented.
Thank you. I agree. All right, any questions?
Marty, can you give us some examples? You mentioned there by reference the American Public Works Association standard specifications. That's great, and that's something I had requested. We talked about this some time ago. Can you give us some examples of what some of those specifications are? Do we even know? Is it just?
Well, there are compaction requirements, there's a gradation requirement and those types of things. So just going down to your neighbor's lot that looks gravelly and coming throwing it on the ground is not going to be an acceptable type of treatment for this. It will need to be a select material that they're using. Yes, much cheaper than paving or asphalt as an option, but it's going to have to take some work. You're going to have to compact it tight and that, the standards require that as far as how they're specified, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody want to say anything? No?
It's a public hearing, so we do need to open it up.
Sorry. This is a public hearing. We would love to hear from you.
Lori Williams, 175 South, 1300 East. This is more for Marty. I just wanted to know what this, can you elaborate on this? It says, or as approved by the city engineer.
That's him. Whatever he wants to do, he can do.
That's what I, because you have the specifications.
That's why I went into the description of the goals and I thought that was important to add to this. Is that we all understand what we're trying to accomplish and that is a hard surface that's not going to track, that is compacted, that has a thickness to it. We don't want somebody just coming skipping something on.
I appreciate that.
And so that, I felt that we were accomplishing that. Now, whether or not somebody can come and approve, be that there's really another alternative that's going to accomplish those goals, I think we're willing to listen to alternatives. But it's going to have to come up with a pretty good solution. I mean, you're going to have to show me something that, hey, this works well.
Okay.
And this is what we're planning to do, get that approved.
That's all I wanted. Thanks.
Okay, thanks Lori. Planning Commissioner Jennifer.
Jennifer Batista, do you need my address?
No, not anymore.
My, I just want to do, you know, ask for a recommendation. If it comes back to the planning commission, and I don't know if it's coming back or not, the majority of the planning commission, when we originally brought this, was brought to us, did not think that we should be dictating how many parking places. And most of them thought that we didn't have to add any parking places at all because we have code and ordinances already in place that you can't park on the street, so you have to have adequate parking. So if you recommend it back to the planning commission, can you recommend it with the possibility of us revisiting that? I know that there's several of us, every time it comes before us, we'd like to readdress how many parking spaces are required.
So if we approve this, it won't go back to the planning commission, is that correct?
That could be a separate issue, right, Ken?
Yeah, it is a separate issue.
All right, so maybe that's something at a.
It's not in this one.
You can still bring it forward and let the planning commission.
We can invite staff to do that, yeah.
So we're just talking about surface at this point. All right, anyone else in the public hearing portion? No. Well, yes. So, yes. So this conversation has everything to do with the accessory apartment of which a tiny home will be.
One possibility.
Okay. Go catch them. Because this is the, okay, this is the material that will be the drive approach to the accessory apartment. All right, or the tiny accessory apartment.
This actually grants more flexibility for people that are wanting an accessory apartment for the additional parking required for accessory apartment. So it gives them more options for materials.
All right, I think, okay, is anyone else going to comment? All right, we'll bring it back up here. Anyone want to say anything or make a motion or?
I made the motion to adopt ordinance 2016-24 amending city code section 10-15-47 accessory apartments adjusting the requirements regarding parking areas. Specifically, the materials approved for the construction of the parking spaces.
All right, I have a motion by Sid.
Second.
By Eric. All in favor?
It's by voice.
By voice. All right, Diana, yes. Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. By Sid.
Thanks, Marty.
Seconded by Eric. And I sign.
All of the correct verbiage from you so we can give the right ordinance to Kathy.
All right, thank you. All right, we're moving along. This is also a public hearing to consider for adoption. Ordinance 2016-25 to rezone approximately 5.3 acres from R120 to R112. Located at approximately 940 East, 300 North in the Grove Creek neighborhood. Ken, Director Young.
So request by Jared Bishop of Artisan Construction would like to build a subdivision, which is the next item on the agenda after this. In order to build what he is proposing, the zone would need to change. So I'll show on map here, you've got 500 North or Grove Creek Road, Lane Street, whatever that's called, Drive up here, so, and Murdock Canal and Trail going just to the southern boundaries of this proposed area for subdivision. Murdock Road does come up to access this point of the subdivision, the 5.3 acres. So this would be an extension of Murdock Road, which is planned to continue on up to meet Grove Creek Drive or 500 North eventually. So the zoning in this area, on the particular property and then surrounding properties to the north, is zoned R120. This is in the low density residential area of the general plan, which does allow for the R112 or the R115 zones. You recall recently, earlier this year, we did approve a zone change up here right off of Grove Creek Boulevard or Drive from R120 to R112. A similar request as to what we have here tonight. So with that, this has gone forward to planning commission in a public hearing. Unanimous recommendation for your approval tonight, since it does meet our general plan criteria.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing, so if you would like to. Yes, this is continued?
It was continued.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, first of all, does anybody have any questions for Ken? All right, so we'll open it up to the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on it, they can have the mic time. Seeing none.
Let me ask a quick question, Ken. This R110 zone, is that in a different level of density than our general plan?
Well, we did have some zoning that was done previous to our current general plan designated areas were put into place about 10 years ago. So this R110 zone had been approved prior to that. And when we did a swath across the whole northern section, not northern, about the midsection of the community and said this is low density, that's what the majority of the zoning seemed to be headed in that direction was R12, R115. But not all zones are going to be compliant with that. So that was an existing, pre-existing situation.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm good. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance, this is 2016-25, is that right? To rezone approximately 5.3 acres from an R120 single-family residential zone to an R112 single-family residential zone on property located approximately 940 East, 300 North and adopting all the findings and exhibits and conclusions of the planning commission and so forth and so on.
All right, I have a motion by Ben. By Sid. By voice. Diana, yes. Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
All right, unanimous. I love when that happens. All right. Next, these are just action items. No, is it? Yes. All right, this is 10A. To consider for approval, a 14 lot final plat called Westwood Estates subdivision located at approximately 940 East, 300 North in the R112 zone.
Okay, so we just rezoned this property to R112, so that makes it in the R112 zone. So we anticipated that in the staff report. So same map for the location of the property. This is a close up of the plat that's proposed. So you'll see the extension of Murdock Drive there with a cul-de-sac going northwards. So we create 14 lots that meet the R112 minimum lot size. This has been reviewed preliminarily. The preliminary plat was approved by planning commission. And there is just a few items that are being held out as final requirements by engineering. And one of those was recommended that we actually state it as one of the final requirements that we would like to have you make part of your motion for approval, if you choose to do that. And that would be that final approval is conditional upon obtaining an easement encroachment agreement through the Bureau of Reclamation to have lots that encroach on the Jordan Aqueduct easement. So that would be these properties on the south boundary of that aqueduct easement. So we anticipate this is something that they are going to be able to get. It's just something that we need to have in place with the approval of the plat.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right.
Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ben.
That we approve a 14 lot final plat called Westwood Estates subdivision located approximately 940 East, 300 North in the R112 single-family residential zone, subject to the condition that we get the easement encroachment agreements as described by our community development director.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by.
If you could add and any other final engineering requirements.
And any other final engineering requirements?
Second stands.
All right. Have a motion by Ben, second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. I didn't have any place to sign right there. I've just been signing like crazy and now nothing. All right, all right, the next one is to prove, is this the four lot final, is that where we're at? Yes. Approval for a, of a four lot final plat called Banks subdivision located at approximately 495 East, 1100 North in the R18 zone, Big Spring.
Okay, so it is a simple subdivision located just off of 1100 North and on 500 East there on the corner and then heading northwards. As you can see on the aerial air, the zoning is R18 and the lots do meet the minimum lot size requirement for that zone. So there's the four lots stacked up on each other. The only consideration outside of normal that we would have with this type of subdivision plat is the vicinity plan. Now, we do have a proposed development plan for roadways through all undeveloped areas. This property proposed a new vicinity plan, which was approved by the planning commission. The previous plan showed instead of having a cul-de-sac at this location, the road came straight through.
Yes.
And so, but it was approved as a cul-de-sac with the other road alignment being shown as currently approved in the vicinity plan by the city. So that, with that, we recommend approval of the final plat.
All right, any questions? Got some great neighbors.
Nope.
All right.
Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion for approval of a four lot final plat called Banks subdivision located at approximately 495 East, 1100 North in the R18 single-family residential zone, Big Spring neighborhood.
All right, I have a motion by Eric.
Second.
And a second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wait, did I hear Ben?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Look at us. Only two more, oh, two more pages.
Twenty more items.
All right, wait, what was Marty's recommendation on the, okay, shoot. I'm so competitive, I would work around it.
The recommendation I'm going to be meeting.
A prediction, not a recommendation.
I've become a competitor with Marty because the last few times I have.
You have been winning, so are you.
We all have times here.
Are you willing to disclose?
I could control it here a little bit if I wanted.
Me too.
Diana could manipulate it too.
Let's see, who gets to take the final shot.
They both increased the time like an hour when they knew that you.
They both increased the time like an hour when they knew that you were running the meeting down.
Wait, is that good, or is that bad? Okay. Does anybody hear a hum under their feet?
Yeah, I'm thinking we're gonna blow up here.
It's, it's the boiler. It does that.
A 1912 boiler. Dang it, that won't be caught. All right. This is 10C.
Correct.
To consider for approval, a commercial subdivision called The Grove Plat A, which is revised, located at approximately 700, 700 South, 1350 West, in the Grove Zone, our interchange sub-district.
So this is related to ASIA, so you'll recall a few weeks ago, they did come forward for approval of their final plat. And we mentioned at that time, they're gonna come right back at you with a revised version. So we approved the first one, so that they could get going on their construction with a building permit, and now this is what they really want. So I'll just show that again. So there, it's that property which includes the Central Bank on the corner of Pleasant Grove Boulevard and North County Boulevard. So just including that into the plat arrangement. Shown there, so that's the only developed parcel at this time, but ASIA will take up all that northern area. So this is the plat that was approved a few weeks ago by both Planning Commission and City Council, and now more recently, dividing up this lower area into four separate lots, instead of just two right there. So this is the new plat. It was just at the last, at the last Planning Commission meeting, and they approved the preliminary plat again. And we now recommend again, you approve this revised plat.
This is wonderful. Any questions for Ken?
No.
Nope, okay. I don't have any questions either.
Okay, Mayor Protem will make a motion for approval of a commercial subdivision called The Grove Plat A Revised, located at approximately 700 South, 1350 West, in the Grove Zone, interchange sub-district, Sam White Lane neighborhood.
All right, I have a motion by Eric.
Second.
And a second by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you, ASIA. All right. This one now is D. This is to consider approval of a 28 lot final plat called Garden Grove Plat B, being a vacation of parcel A of Garden Grove Plat A, located at approximately 100 South, 13th West, in the Grove Zone. This is a mixed, mixed housing sub-district, Sam White Lane.
Okay, so it is 28 lots, but actually broken up by units to be 31 type of units that will be part of this development. Now, this is the second portion of the development on the north side is currently under construction. There are some single-family homes in the central and northern area.
Yes.
Not yet constructed is some live-work units that will face onto 1300 West, and also under construction, or I believe finalized at this point, are some townhomes on the back end. So it's basically a replication, not exactly, but the same concept down on the southern end. So that is now being approved as part of the plat. There were a few adjustments from the original approval of the entire development, which required the plat to come forward as plat B. It does include, I'll forward here, yeah, you can see on the aerial, the development that's occurring on the north side right now. So on the southern side, it does include a portion of roadway to be dedicated to the city here for the extension of 100 South Street, which ultimately would come down and connect into Pleasant Grove Boulevard. There is a possibility that this will be removed from the plat. There are some negotiations occurring that could change the alignment of this road. But for now, the developer is wanting to move forward with the plat. So as with ASIA, you may be seeing a revised version of this plat as well. So the preliminary plat was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, and we recommend approval of this.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Anderson. I move that we approve a 28 lot final plat called Garden Grove Plat B, being a vacation of parcel A of Garden Grove Plat A, located approximately 100 South, 1300 West, in the Grove Zone, mixed housing subdivision, sub-district, and adopting all the findings and exhibits and conclusions and conditions and considerations of the Planning Commission.
The foresees.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ben, a second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Done. Okay. This is number, letter E, number E. To consider approval of a four lot final plat called The Void Plat B, located approximately 1800 West, 425 South, in the Grove Zone, commercial sub-district, Sam White Lane neighborhood.
Okay, the council...
This is the Ken Show.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
I was gonna put my tap shoes on, but I thought, no, I'll pass. So recently, the city approved a plat, Plat A, Void Plat A, which is where the Void Building is going to be developed. And they wanted to wait until their next site plan, as part of this whole development was ready to go, so that they could continue or begin and go forward with the construction of both developments at the same time. So it's my understanding that shortly after this is approved here tonight, that they will be ready to start moving forward in construction. So as shown here, you've got this property, which is where the Void was...
The building.
Approved. Yeah. And so now we have this whole area up in, in through here, which is being included in Plat B, which a portion of that will be coming up on the next item as site plan for Evermore Gardens. So as you can see on the zoning map, it all falls within the commercial sales sub-district of the Grove Zone. And so here is the four plats, or excuse me, the four lots on the plat, so Lot 1, 2, 3, and 4. And outside of that is the Void that was already approved, and up here is the area of the Evermore Gardens. So we did have some concerns previously that were ironed out, which was the alignment of this road as it goes northward. We've had previous discussion about the LDS Church coming off of 100 South and the road that they would have on their west boundary extending south, that they needed to align with what was happening there. So we did have some adjustments on this plat to realign the road. We've had some conversations with the property owners in that area, so that there could be this cooperation of where the road would go in. And we have enough understanding with the property owners at this time to move forward with approval on this plat.
Okay.
So we recommend approval. The preliminary plat was approved by Planning Commission unanimously.
Okay. All right, any questions?
Just a quick comment, I'd like to commend the efforts to coordinate with all the property owners, I think that's great.
Yes.
I'll make a motion if there's no other questions.
All right.
Make the motion that we approve a four lot final plat called The Void Plat B, located approximately 1800 West, 425 South, in the Grove Zone, commercial sub-district, adopting all the findings, conclusions, and exhibits of the staff report.
Second.
Sorry, Lynn.
What about, what about the considerations?
Considerations. And everything else.
All right, I have a motion by Ben and a second by Lynn.
You're right, Lynn.
He edged her out by, by hair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
One more.
Yeah, one more.
All right. This is letter F. To consider for approval, a site plan for the Evermore Gardens, located at approximately 1800 West, 425 South, in the Grove Zone, the commercial sub-district.
Okay, so we do have the applicant here tonight, and I'm going to turn some time over to them, because I think it would be beneficial for you to hear from them...
I would love to.
...what their development actually is and what some of the detail is on there. So I'll introduce it. Here's the site plan in black and white. So you do have, and this was that northern piece in the plat that we just approved. So you do have the parking and a main building here up front, then going into a pretty substantial garden area that has some different themes and different uses. I'll have them explain that to you. We also have a rendering of the landscaping that will be put in there, which is, shall I say tremendous for...
Yes. You can.
She likes that.
We'll second that.
But for, for our gardens, that's what we would expect. Part of that request is just this, that there is a provision in the ordinance that allows for a developer in the Grove Zone to request a reduction in the actual landscape buffer area off of the street by five feet, if they provide more than the required amount of landscaping and amenities on their property. And so this is what they are requesting. I'm gonna come back to this slide in just a second, but I wanted to show you on the map, the areas on the, the northern road that would go up to where the LDS Church property is going to be, the connection up here. It's, it's on the boundaries of that. Am I looking correctly? No, it's, this is the road. Okay, I'm sorry, north is right here. I thought something looked funny there. North is right here, south being on this side, so, and the Void Building will be right in this location. So it's, it's along this roadway here, where they are proposing a 20-foot buff, a landscape buffer rather than 25. And with consideration of the, the provision in the ordinance that permits that, City Council would have to approve that as part of the approval of the site plan tonight. So I'll read what the, the code says. "The required landscape buffer width may be reduced no more than five feet by the City Council if the developers provided enhancements and exceeded the city's standard requirements for architecture, amenities, and landscaping for the overall project area." Now, some of the detail they gave us is written there below. "The exterior landscape has 324 trees, 105..." Okay, I'm not, something went wrong with the numbering there. "48% of which are evergreens." Okay, so 105 or 48% of which are evergreens. "There are 57 trees in the park strip, right away spaced approximately 25 on center." C letter. Now, you did receive a letter...
We did.
...where they get into a little bit more detail on the, how they have exceeded the landscaping requirements. If you'd like, I could read that.
Go ahead and read that.
And I would do that if I had a copy. "We would like the City Council members to approve the five-foot reduction in our street buffer width from 25 feet down to 20 feet per City Code 101415M5F. The areas affected are shown in attachment with yellow highlighter, as we showed a minute ago. All other buffer areas meet or exceed the 25-foot standard. To meet the enhancements for the reduction, we have increased the minimum open space from 10% to 33% for the exterior portion of the project. The interior portion will far exceed that. We have added banners on hanging baskets to our street lighting to enhance the garden nature of the Grove development. We are planning at approximately four trees per 1,000 square feet of planable area, includes parking lot and park strip areas, for the exterior portion of the project. Interior will far exceed these numbers. Standard is one tree per 1,000. We will be installing a water feature at the roundabout that will be an enhancement for the entire development. The overall development with its English, Celtic, Victorian architecture gardens and amenities, this development will be above and beyond what is required for the Grove Zone." So I think staff agrees with this assessment and would support the approval of this reduction. And this site plan has been reviewed and approved by the Design Review Board with recommendation for approval, as well as the Planning Commission.
Wonderful. We'd love to hear from you.
Sure.
They're the same name. Hi, I'm Ken Brett Schneider. I'm the, I don't know, what do you call me?
The visionary.
Evermore czar.
Love the shirt, by the way.
Oh, thank you, that's my... So our whole vision for the whole development was to really do something outstanding, I mean, not just in Pleasant Grove, but for all of Utah County. And that is to create kind of a really beautiful entertainment zone and a place where people could go and actually do something for many more hours than typically we've seen anywhere else in the county. And we have great outdoor stuff in Utah. What I've missed, coming from Canada, I come from Toronto, Canada area, is really a sense of a place where a community can go and, and do stuff together and have a lot of fun and something that's beautiful. So the whole idea of this development was to really kind of raise the bar. This is the kind of the golden gem, I think, of Pleasant Grove City, if you think about it. This is really the entrance to your city. This is right off of I-15. We fell in love with this property originally, with obviously the full Evermore project that didn't happen in the way that we had visualized it. I'm actually equally excited about this project. It's different. Am I coming through okay? Okay. It's, it's, it's different, but in many ways, I actually think that the refined design is actually even better in many ways than the original. And I think it also plays out to the community in Pleasant Grove even better, because we made it a garden park specifically. It's going to take some of the, some of the original traffic burdens and maybe even some of the noise burdens, because we listened to that when we did our first event here, the Pumpkin Fest. I think the majority of the event was really good. I, I think the concert late at night did not play out very well. And so we really listened to that, and we understand that we have to kind of play within the rules of, of the fact that there's a lot of residential neighborhoods around the area. So our whole goal with this project is to make something absolutely beautiful, to make it a place that has events all year round. So the primary events that are gonna be hosted in the park is, we're going to do a Pumpkin Fest like we did, but obviously in a full-blown, designed environment. I think everybody loved the event that we put together.
Yes.
People were really excited about it. If you can imagine that much more organized in a specifically designed, it's designed to be almost like a European hamlet, so it's gonna be absolutely beautiful. All the buildings and everything are designed around that concept. There will be basically five themed gardens, so we have the main themed garden, I'm gonna go over here, actually the pointer right there, okay. I have cataracts right now due to some medication they gave me, so I'm gonna do my best here. This area right here is kind of what we would call like the town square. And the main structure leading into it is going to be a very beautiful, kind of large European barn. It has, you know, it has large kind of columns, wooden columns to it, it has high volume in it. It has these kind of like little lighthouse features on the top, has three of them. We have some other renderings that we can send at some other time here, but it's, it's a beautiful structure, and we didn't experience any expense on it. We really went with one of the companies that designed the nicest structures that way. This is kind of the entrance into it, will contain both an event space in here, where we can host all kinds of things like weddings and things like that, but, but it also has a space back in here that has a kind of a retail space. The atrium you see there is connected to the building, and we're gonna do a, what we call the Evermore Garden Cafe. So it's going to be kind of a fresh cafe. We wanna do kind of locally sourced, organic kind of foods and stuff in a really quaint little cafe. The water feature here, I'm really excited about, this is something we put a lot of thought into. But if you look kind of up there, there's a pavilion, right there. And that pavilion actually sits up on a hilltop, and so we have a water feature that comes down into a large water feature. The water feature will be there obviously for three of the seasons, then it turns into an ice rink. So it ends up being an outdoor ice rink, and that becomes part of a, kind of a Christmas event that we're gonna put together. That's gonna be really spectacular. So this main garden is what we call kind of a multipoint garden. It's, it's gonna be a very colorful garden that has lots of features to it. We have a couple of main structures in here, there's going to be a couple of greenhouses that are styled Victorian, so really beautiful structures. One we want to do is a butterfly, kind of frog, fish feature. So it'll just be a little cute walk-through... cute walk-through feature. The other one is going to be an event, garden space, so that we can, again, part of kind of hosting smaller events and things like that. We're going to have a, kind of a European hamlet cottage right there. It's very, very cute. Wish I had a rendering of it here right now, but it's going to be a confectionery and kind of a novelty confectionery building. A lot of our inspiration, we like some of the aspects of Gartner Village. We think that some aspects of that are really cool, we want to bring those elements into here. We have some future concepts for expansion of some of these features in that area later on. Right now, we're going to plant, basically, retail nursery planting in there right now, but eventually we want to look at that as an expansion area. So that consists of the main garden. This garden area in here, and I'll try to speed this up a bit, is going to be an English style garden. So we have little features in there. They're almost like kind of elaborate sheds, and they're used, the outsides are going to be gorgeous, they're going to look like kind of English style countryside little buildings and features. And those will be used during events that we put together. So with Pumpkin Fest, we'll have a kind of a pumpkin adventure that you walk through and we'll all be dressed up for that season. We're going to do a Christmas event and we'll have a Christmas walk-through through these garden areas, and the idea is that we'll do all kinds of lights and little sets and things like that, that will be magical. This garden is kind of a, it's a combination garden. We have kind of a Celtic, old Celtic area, and this area is, again, kind of an extension of this English garden, but it has some of its own features. These are very thick-planted, beautiful gardens. These, I love Thanksgiving Point, but I can say Thanksgiving Point is a very spread-out kind of garden concept. If you've been to any kind of world-class gardens like Bouchard Gardens and like Victoria, this is what we're going for. So we're going for very thick-planted, high variety kind of gardens. This garden is going to be, it's kind of based off of gardens that we've seen in Amsterdam. The, what is it called again? The, I'm going to forget the name again. It's the Kookan, I don't know, anyway. We'll just say Dutch garden. So the Dutch gardens are thick trees. I mean, we're literally planting, I mean, I don't even know the number in there. It's going to be like, I mean, all of it has a lot of trees, but this is a very tree-planted garden. We do lots of what we call shade plants, design into the environment. There's a lot of water features and bridges and all kinds of really cool things that are going into this, so. I guess the thing I want to say is that it's going to be probably one of the funnest places to go and also one of the most beautiful places. We have all of these roadways. We wanted to make this the stadium of gardens, so everything rises up, so you have a retainer wall on the backside, and so all the gardens are in layers. You're going to just see mountains and gardens when you're inside of there. We have bike trails, so in the summertime, these trails are actually eight feet wide, so you can actually bike along them. They're all ADA, so, you know, the graduation and decline are really nice for bike riding, and you can ride around these areas. So we're going to have bike rentals in here, you know, people can go strolling through there. When we're not doing events, ticketed events, this is actually going to be kind of an open concept. We have a train planted, planned to go in here, so it's the same train that Hogel Zoo has, their newest one, kind of a period scale train, and it will go, it will go through a tunnel system here and will go all along these gardens, on the exterior of these gardens, so your whole view is just the gardens through the whole train ride. There's a couple of drop-off points like here that are centered, so you can drop off and then walk where you want to walk through the gardens and those kind of things. The three main events we want to do every year, as I mentioned, is Pumpkin Fest, we want to do a Christmas Festival, and then we want to do a Lantern Festival in the summertime, and then we'll have all kinds of sub-events, including, I want to organize like a farmer's market in here. Love to work with Pleasant Grove City. This is a bigger conversation about fireworks and things like that. I know that you have your own city fireworks, but I think that there's some things that we can bring to the table together that may be able to help reduce budget and do some really incredible shows. So we have a really nice area here that I think could accommodate that and could be a really great backdrop for that, but we can discuss that later. So this is, in general, what's happening with Evermore. I think I've mentioned all the main structures. Most of them are really landscape-oriented, garden-type structures, the main structure being here, and this all connects into the main development. I'm really proud of what we're doing in the main development also, I think, just to give you my vision of it. I fought a lot of people over this, including others coming in and making investment in a couple of the other plots and not wanting to spend the money. I said it's well worth spending some money to do something great, and so the vision is true tree-lined streets. We fought with the city planners a little bit on this idea of like getting the parking off of the streets and really doing bike lanes. So the accommodation was we asked to come in a little bit more, they asked to go out, we compromised, and we created these bike lanes, and I think that's going to be great because there's all this interconnectivity through the whole development. The, in addition to doing the tree line, we're going to do flower beds along those. So if you think of sidewalks, trees aren't just in a grassy knoll, they're all going to be flower beds. They're going to be designed flower beds all the way through this whole development. We're doing period lighting, some more expensive lighting with banners and planters, flower bed planters, baskets, and we're also hooking up electrical tubes that we can do lights and stuff on the trees during the seasons. And then putting quite a bit of money into a center feature, which actually KPB is taking that all on, over top of all the other groups that are coming in. This is a contribution we're making to the development, and so putting several hundred thousands of dollars into a really beautiful fountain feature in the center of this roundabout. So we're bringing something great to the city, and I encourage you to support us, so.
Thank you very much, Ken. Have any questions? No.
How soon, Ken? How soon?
I want to break ground as fast as we can break ground, so it's really up to all of us working together. I think all of the pieces are there, capital is there this time, and, you know, we're ready to go. So we're excited to break ground, and what's nice is the whole development has all come together, so really all of the pieces of the development, including most likely a hotel coming into the site, which we'll be talking about that next, is, and it's a very nice hotel, by the way. It's a boutique hotel, which is really going to be nice for this feature, bring some great things into this area, so. Any other questions from anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. This is absolutely stunning, and we're very, very grateful. I, I'm-
Grateful to be here.
I think, is it Kookanog or something like that?
Yes.
Yes. It's one of my favorite cities, actually. I love Amsterdam. All right. Any questions?
No.
All right. Well, then I need someone to make a motion.
I make the motion that we approve a site plan for Evermore Gardens located approximately 1800 West, 425 South in the Grove Zone Commercial Sub-District.
Second.
All right. Well done, Sid and Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know what Sid and Lynn is, together. Sin.
Thank you. We could have just-
I'm glad you kept the Evermore name, too. I think that's awesome.
Next time that we have a meeting, would you just suggest that you be at the top of the order?
So you don't have to wait all night?
I know it's entertaining. Actually, there is a large group of people that like tiny-
Yeah, right on there, first.
Okay, thank you. Oh, my gosh. Okay, so I don't have to sign anything on that? Do we want to take a break or are we going to keep rocking and rolling? What's that?
After J.
After J. Or G.
E and H have been continuing. In fact, I'll make that motion right now.
Oh, yes, please.
Move that we continue on approval extending the, approval, extending the approval of a five-lot plot called Grove Creek Center Commercial Sub-District subdivision located at approximately 2168 West Grove Parkway in the Grove Interchange Sub-District, continued indefinitely?
Definitely. The next one to the next meeting.
And then H, let's do those as separate motions, probably.
All right. So we have a motion by Ben?
Okay. Ben, I mean, Lynn gets it.
All right, Lynn, he's catching up, actually. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And then I move that we continue the approval of a two-lot final plot called Larson Acres Plot D located approximately 112 East, 1280 North in the rural residential zone, Big Springs neighborhood, for one week.
Second.
All right, motion-
Two weeks, for two weeks to November 1st.
Second stands.
All right, Ben made the motion, Lynn seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Aye, to consider for adoption a resolution authorizing the mayor pro tem to declare a 1998 Dodge truck and a 2015 Toyota Tundra truck as surplus and direct that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property. Director Beaumont-
Two vehicles that we are hoping to surplus. The 98 Dodge is just ready to go, so we've used that over the years and it's been a great truck, but it's time to move on. The 2015 Toyota Tundra truck is, we're kind of looking at trying to keep our fleets more, I guess, up to date down there. We feel that we have a lot of costs in maintenance and upkeep of older vehicles. We think that there's some value added when we can turn some trucks over a little bit faster. We're really kind of going to try this out and see how it works. So this 2015 truck is two years old, we've had it for a couple of years now, and we're looking at surplusing that so that we can sell that and then purchase another truck and maybe look at doing this again in a couple of years, and you'll probably see that on a couple of other trucks. We recently sold a 2012 Ford F-350. I mentioned that on the, in our last meeting. Felt that we got a great value. We can purchase these trucks under the state contract, had a good value, so we feel that if we do this, that for very little cost, we can have a new fleet. So we're trying this out, we'll let you know how it goes and keep you updated on that, but we'd like the surplus.
Is there a call to TNT on that?
No, we've come up with another process for putting it in the paper on KSL, actually, advertising it, receiving closed bids, sealed bids for a time period, and then taking the high bidder on those bids. And then if it doesn't sell from that, then it'll, we can determine whether we take it to TNT or whether or not we try to sell it just on a car lot or something of that nature, but we are looking to try to get a specific value out of those trucks, and so that's-
Who was driving that one?
Mark Atwood.
Any questions?
No deep breaths, no, no.
No, no deep breath? All right. Then I'm ready for a motion. There's no questions?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2016-042 authorizing the mayor pro tem to declare the 1998 Dodge truck and a 2015 Toyota Tundra truck as surplus and direct that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property.
Second.
Eric made the motion?
It's all ends.
Lynn got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, resolutions are done by voice typically.
Oh.
That's correct.
Got ahead. Nope, continue, continue. Here we go. And, by voice, Diana's, yes, Eric?
Yes.
Yes, Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
All right, and the motion on that was Eric and Lynn. All right.
Do you want to take the break now? Because I think item J will take us a few minutes if we, this would be a natural breaking point.
Move for a five-minute break.
All right, I'm ready. Could anybody bring me in dinner?
Move for dinner to be brought in.
How many nuts can you eat in a five-minute break?
Please, at least a couple packages.
He's the last. I should have made him remember timer.
They saved some cashews for you, Eric.
Cashews, I like that.
The thing that's down on me is they're well, they all love each other, yeah.
I teach a bunch of the Boy Scouts the-
I'll take a couple of that.
That's still their goal.
We'll be around for two and a half hours. Were you here at the start?
That one's huge. I wonder what you saw. That door did too.
And then I went back.
I can use my secret code. It's good. We always open these.
I teach a bunch of the Boy Scouts the-
I'm a little optimistic, he has the personal.
What's your name? Thanks for coming, bringing them. Yeah, if you didn't want that signed or anything, I don't know that you actually need it, but um, I'm councilman.
And they're going to be run down.
Thanks for coming. It's awesome of you. This was a long night, and it's still going. We're just taking a break now, but you don't need to stick around. Thanks for being involved. Actually, the Evermore Gardens is going to be awesome. He had, I don't know if you saw the Evermore Theme Park Adventure Park? That was going to be cool, and I went to that with my friends, I took a whole bunch of my buddies, and then I went back with my wife. We did, there were all these quests you could do, and we went through the different quests, and if you completed them all, you'd get like a golden coin. It was just fun, I just not like anything else anywhere around here. It would have been a really neat thing. But it sounds like they're preserving a lot of the best features of that in this new proposal, so I'm glad. I thought we were going to lose a lot of that, so. Cool.
Not have people yelling at you because your water-
Yeah, to get scared. Doesn't even faze you, huh? Well, thanks for coming, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks. You do.
Tiny homes took forever. Surprise.
Christie, we need to know, downtown owner of the pipeline, you're the one committee member here that's that dedicated, you get to pick. It all comes down to you. Where would you pick?
As would I, just for the-
That is the commercial I quoted my wife when I said we have to move. I think it would be epic. Yeah, it was. Tree houses, and then real estate, tree house. That's a good idea when you're twenty. Ben, with a long agenda. Got a lot of unanimous votes though, so that's good. Makes it easy. I'm excited about it. Evermore Gardens, theirs are gonna be. Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like he's preserving some of the concepts of the, of the park that I was afraid we hadn't lost forever. I did, I went, I took a bunch of my friends and we went one night, um, and just had a blast and, um, and then I came back with my wife. Cause like my wife's guy, I took all my guy friends. Like I gotta bring my wife to this and do this again. And we did, he had it set up so you could do like these, these quests. If you talked to the right people, you could pick up the quest books and go on some adventure and complete some tasks. And, uh, if you did all of those, you got a gold coin. And so my wife and I did every one and that park we just went to and we went back through several times until we, we'd seen it all. It was awesome. And I was really sad and it looked like it was not gonna be here. That one, it's, the plan on the back looks nice. I'm trying to remember.
All right, we'd like to invite you to come back.
Oh, no.
Hey. You'll excuse me, I'll go get you anything you want.
Anybody else want water down there?
Okay, here we go.
Five, oh, you have to hit his pipe, oh. The hot keys.
All right.
Bring it on.
Yep. Settle in, Lynn. Oh, I'm so excited for this next one. So we'll get going on it.
I've scheduled two hours for this one.
And look at Christie working her way into a soft comfy seat.
I don't blame her.
All right.
For now, our city attorney.
Do I have to do anything before we start again, or?
You just want to, uh,
Call people back to order?
Bang the devil a few times.
There you go. All right, this is, uh, item J, to consider for adoption a resolution twenty sixteen dash zero four three, authorizing the mayor pro tem to enter into an inter-local cooperative agreement between Pleasant Grove, Utah County and Cedar Hills regarding Canyon Road one hundred east and providing for an effective date. Taking this very seriously.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Uh, number one, a guy my size probably isn't a candidate for a tiny home.
No, just six hundred square feet.
Well, whatever. Um, and you're doing a fine job running our meeting, Diana, by the way, even though I had a little pot shot at you there.
I enjoy pot shots.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah, I thought it was a compliment, too.
As we, uh, introduced this item last week, I, it, uh, came to my attention that, uh, I don't know if I explained it very well to what's on the table uh, between us and the county and Cedar Hills, so, um, I want to, uh, make sure that there is a complete understanding. I want to make sure the council has all their, uh, questions, uh, answered in regards to this, um, so that everybody knows what's on the table. As we've talked with the county's staff, I mean, we, the, the understanding with the county is that our elected officials are the ones that are essentially going to decide, uh, how we're going to approach this and what we're gonna do. Everything we've done up to this point is just been a negotiation to try to get the city in the best possible position based on what the county has been telling us, uh, as we've been talking about this for the last year. Uh, this has been a project that, um, has been discussed a few times and, and, uh, to reiterate the history again, uh, this road was a U dot road up until just a couple of years ago. Uh, when North County Boulevard was built, um, the county and U dot had an agreement that, uh, North County Boulevard would become a U dot road, a state road, and that, um, Canyon Road First East would become, uh, a county road. Uh, along with that, uh, U dot at that point was going to, uh, do, um, some work on it. Uh, I think what we would call a mill and fill, a four inch overlay on, on, uh, that road, which is in badly need of, of something at this point. The cost of that was three point three million dollars and so they gave, they have committed three point three million dollars to this project. The county has committed one point five million of their own money, uh, towards this project. And so initially, they had a budget of four point eight million dollars to do the mill and fill on the full length of this, this road from, uh, all the way to Tempanoga, from Tempanoga Highway all the way down to State Street in Pleasant Grove. Uh, it's not a perfect fifty fifty. I think a majority of the road is in Pleasant Grove. What do we figure, sixty percent?
Set, seven miles or something, isn't it?
So, uh, there is, uh, a little bit more in Pleasant Grove than there is in Cedar Hills. Uh, uh, initially, when we talked with the county about this a year and a half ago or two years ago, um, the decision was, or the discussion was, is that, uh, that the cities would take the road right away. And it, and that was the initial discussions we were having with the county. Uh, that was something that we debated, uh, talked about administratively. I think there was a couple of times we gave kind of some general information to council, but we never really had a full-blown discussion, um, in regards to how this was. But we did get to a point where we applied for some funding, uh, in order to improve this, uh, to do more improvements than just the mill and fill. So, uh, this road, um, has, uh, could use a little bit of widening. Now, when I say widening, I'm not talking about adding additional lanes. Talking about making sure that, uh, or maybe it is having a turn lane.
Let me just explain one thing about this. So I was involved at J U B with the whole project and really it was a city going to MAG and saying, hey, this road needs some improvements. We need some widening to occur to make it three lanes through essentially from State Street to twenty-six hundred north. Once you get north of twenty-six hundred north, there's no shoulders, so safety wise, it's very unsafe through that area. And so the city, uh, with the, um, with U dot kind of saying, yeah, we'll, we'll accept this project as well, went to MAG and said, hey, this would be a great regional project to get done. It widens, it creates a safer road. We've got some bad crown issues. Um, we've got issues with water, storm water and things like that. This would be a great project to be done. And so they approved it as part of that MAG, uh, project, uh, with the concept report that we submitted. And so they approved it for the nine point four million. Anyway, so that's, that's kind of the goal, is to make it safe and widen the areas. And that's why it was a MAG project, because it was actually making improvement to the region, not specifically just to the road in, in a city.
Okay.
So the initial budget that they had was four point eight, so three point three from U dot, uh, one point five from the county. And then the MAG money was about another five point three, um, to a total project of just over, uh, about nine point three million. Uh, so that was, um, we got to that point and then it was, uh, as, you know, we were talking with Cedar Hills, it was decided that, you know what? There is, uh, some long-term consequences. Uh, obviously, if we take this road right now, uh, we'll be, there'll be some issues as far as cost and when it comes time to do treatments and that sort of thing. So we communicated that back to the county and the county said, that's fine. Um, we're, we'll just do our original project. We'll take our four point five, we'll do the mill and fill. And, uh, so if we won't have any of the improvements, uh, with the MAG money, uh, we'll just, uh, kind of in essence, do the bare minimum of what they have cash on hand. Uh, so we, uh, re-approached them and said, well, we really would like the county to take the MAG money and to do these full improvements. And, uh, their response is, is we're not interested in that unless the cities are willing to eventually take this road. And so that's when we entered into a negotiation with them on us taking the road. Initially, they proposed twenty years. We came back with thirty years, um, for the city to take the ownership after those thirty years. And in the process, um, they, there was, uh, you know, some other requests. One of them is snow plowing on the road. Uh, the county does not have county roads in this area, and so they don't have snow plow equipment in this area. They'd have to drive it from the south up to here. So they said if we're, as we've gone through this process, they're saying we would need you guys to provide the snow plowing on the road at our cost um, as a city. Um, they talked about signage, they talked about striping, uh, pothole repair, uh, things like that, um, that would be at the city expense.
Curb and gutter?
I think there's, is there curb and gutter on part of the?
So, a good majority of the section from State Street up to twenty-six hundred north, almost all of it is proposed to now be curb and gutter. Not necessarily sidewalk, cause we were just looking at maintaining the water and, uh, the pavement there. And so it wasn't planned to be sidewalk, but curb and gutter would be installed essentially from twenty-six hundred north to State Street with the project.
At our expense?
No, that's part of the project cost.
Nine point three.
That's the, yeah, that's.
That's one of the benefits of getting the project done, is you actually get those improvements installed with the project.
Yeah, so if they reject the MAG money and we don't take the MAG money, the, we won't have the curb and gutter.
No.
Just mill and fill the existing pavement.
So there's a section in there, do you want me to hit it yet? Okay, so there one there that says, uh, where it's under the entities, us and Cedar, it says, pay to the county the annual cost of pavement, pavement maintenance such as surface treatment, chip seal, seal coat overlays. I thought that was there.
Where are you at?
I reached out.
Eric, what page?
This is under, I don't know, page four or five. This is under entity shall. And then like bullet item number six or seven, I can't, I don't.
It starts with entity shall?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And then it's like six or seven?
Well, I lost it. Now we pull back here.
Um, it says.
Well, even, there's another one that even says entities, if it exceeds nine point three million.
Pay to the county the annual cost of pavement maintenance such as surface treatments as deemed necessary by county for all asphalt widening that occurs along the right of way after the completion of the MAG project. So what they're saying is once the MAG project is completed and you come back and you want another bike lane, that's on us. We're paying for the bike lane.
Eric, I think the goal there, as we were talking with them, originally they wanted to said, they wanted to say, okay, we're gonna do a mill and fill project and we're not gonna do the widening, we're not gonna do the improvements and therefore that's what we would have to maintain. So they originally came back and said, anything beyond that that gets widened then would be the city, city's responsibility to silk out overlay or whatever the reason, those other things are. What we went back and said is that we want to make sure that whatever is constructed with this MAG project is what you are maintaining for that thirty years. It's, the city is not participating in any of the stuff that's under the original concept report. Now, if there's other projects that come in that widen beyond that original report, then that, those are the things that we would have to address as far as maintaining, uh, the additional width. If we did a bike lane or things of that nature along the road.
Okay, then, sorry, one more. Are you comfortable with the thing where it says if we, if they, if they exceed the nine point three million, then the cost is on us?
Yeah, that was.
Because if it's more than nine point three, we will value engineer it so that it's not more than nine three. So if the bids come back and it's ten million?
Mm-hmm. Well, part of that's on them, it says, but, but then also they reverse it and say, if it goes over, then it's on us.
Sure, and, and the, the biggest thing that I think we did there as well is we went back after, now that we're in these negotiations and re-analyzed to make sure that the budget wasn't over with revised costs. We did, we did that, we're, we're under by ten to fifteen percent. We feel that there's enough contingency in there that it might actually allow us to do some additional improvements to the right of way rather than actually, uh, cutting it back. Now, that'll be shown by the bids, but what, what I would say that we would do is if we'll keep it to that nine point three by, uh, cutting back the scope of the project, uh, we aren't interested in bringing up additional funds to do things, but they're willing to go up to nine point three, our estimates even with contingencies are much less than that in the eight point two. So you got, there's about a million dollar of contingency in that with what the planned project is. Um, and so there might even be some additional improvements that are done.
Can we move that over to the public safety building, that million dollars?
Yes.
So, had, so there has been an, a bid done and that's how much we determined, or the county's determined it's gonna be is nine point three million?
No, we had a concept plan done and that's an engineer.
When was that done?
Few years ago?
Uh, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. But we update, again, we updated the numbers, said to make sure that we were still within that, that realm of where we're at and it came in even with the update at about eight point three.
So it wasn't an actual bid, it was a concept, is that right?
Correct. We don't have final plans.
A representative Cedar Hills says they're looking at fifteen million to do this. And if that's the case, we don't have six million dollars, five, five, six million dollars to add to the project.
I don't know where they got fifteen million, cause we, I mean, David Bunker, their city manager, who's an engineer, and Marty sat down and went over the concept plan to make sure we are still under the nine point three.
We actually.
We are, we're a million dollars right now.
Redid the entire analysis to verify quantities and prices currently with the planned project. And they came in, I think it was about eight point three million dollars, as they're estimated with the contingencies built into that. So, I'm not sure where they're getting their fifteen million dollar number. Now, if they're thinking that the whole road is gonna be dug down, uh, with a new cross-section of base and road base and asphalt, that's not what the proposed project ever was. The proposed project was to take all of the asphalt out, re-compact the base, fix soft spots, widen the road, and then put new, six inches of new asphalt on the road section. So, uh, maybe they have a different concept of what they think should be done and they're saying maybe that would cost fifteen million, but based on what the report is for, um, it's, it's not gonna cost that much.
I've got a bunch of questions. I've been getting calls the last couple of days from a lot of elected officials about this particular proposal. Um, one question I have to start us with, uh, what, what issues do we face on the Pleasant Grove side and what issues do we face on the Cedar Hills side? Is the water retention issues, the crowning issues, are those applicable to both cities or just on their side? We know?
Well, from their side, they do have a lot more water issues and, and you'll notice, I can show you the concept report, walk through what was planned, um, essentially from Cedar Hills Drive almost down to the Murdoch Canal. That whole section there was planned to get curb and gutter on this west side of the road because right now there is none and all of the water from the road and any development on the west side flows over and potentially down flood, provides flooding to those homes. And so that was one of the improvements that was proposed in the concept report is to take care of that. So there's, they're putting in inlets and storm water improvements to collect that water and take it down to a new retention facility. That's the standard in Cedar Hills is they allow retention facilities. That's in the plan, uh, purchase of the little piece of property to do that right by the Murdoch Canal. Um, right above Creekside Development, uh, is where, where that's planned to be. And so that was all put in to that. From our standpoint, we only have a few missing sections of, of curb and gutter. Uh, we already have a lot of the storm drain improvements in for most of this section, so we're not talking about a significant amount of improvement there. There was, you know, a couple thousand feet of storm drain pipe in Pleasant Grove. Uh, there was some curb and gutter. Some of that will already be installed with the Savage Estates development that you've, that you'll see coming forward here in the next month or so. Um, and so, you know, some of those improvements will be done, but from, from our standpoint, we're getting three-lane constructed road to twenty-six hundred north, curb and gutter on that and a new pavement section. There's also some really good improvements happening at four thousand north, which is a, a bad intersection. Right now, it's unsafe as far as sight distance and things of that nature. It's cutting the road down about three or four feet through that section where that church is at. Um, so there's some significant safety improvements being proposed with the project that are a great benefit, um, to everybody, the public in general. And we would hope that they would choose to do them regardless, but at the same time, they're saying they're not gonna do them unless we are agreeing to, to do this agreement, so.
Next question I have, um, one of the points of questions that has come up as I've talked with county commissioners is over who actually made the application for the mag grant? You indicated that it was us, that we filled the report? It was our city or is it Cedar Hills City or?
We joint, it was joint.
Was it a joint?
Yeah, so.
Joint application?
Yeah.
Another question I have, Eric was reading the language about the, the 9.3 whatever million and, and what happens if we exceed that and how the city has responsibility for that. You indicated that we would value engineer, but isn't the control of those decisions and how the project is pursued really in the hands of the county? Not really our hands?
No, we're part of that.
By virtue of the interlocal agreement? I mean, who's got the ultimate decision? Do we have equal representation? If there's a dispute and they want to not value engineer and we do, how does that play out in practical terms?
Well, I, I think most of it is our say because we're the ones asking for them to take the additional money. I mean, they're, they're, they just want to do the 4 point, uh, the 4.8 million dollar project. So the additional improvements that we will be receiving as cities, in my mind, those are things that when it's bid out, we sit down with them and and if it's over 9.3 or whatever and it's something we financially don't want to do, we don't have to do it.
Yeah, we've already talked with them about putting additive alternates into the bid so that, you know, based on a value of that improvement being installed. So if it significantly goes over, then you cut out an additive from that bid. So that's already been kind of in the concept discussions that we would do that so that we keep to that 9.3 million dollars.
One of the things that I've heard is that the mag grant money will go away at some point, but I don't know that I've ever been told a definitive date when that grant expires, if it's not spent. The, the heart and soul of this issue in my view, and I have it on pretty good authority out of Cedar Hills, that they're going to vote that they have for the last two years, what it, 0.5 against entering this agreement, that they're going to do the same again tonight as they debate this. And so one of my thoughts from the, from a negotiation standpoint, I think this ultimately comes down to, oh, it's like a game of chicken. Will the county actually not spend money that's dedicated to these roads? That's good for everyone in the county. It's a public good. Will they not spend that money just because we didn't take this depreciating asset that nobody wants? Which is the, which is the reality, right? Nobody wants this road. We can't take care of the roads we do have. We don't want another four road, four miles of Canyon Road in Pleasant Grove that we now have to maintain 30 years from now. And so from my perspective, if the real question is, will they or won't they spend the money regardless of what we do? I suspect they will. And that's certainly what Cedar Hills is banking on, is that they're going to spend the money anyway, that it's a bluff, so to speak.
We can call them on the bluff. The meetings I've sat in, they have been adamant that they will not do that project.
But how can they, how can they not do that when they own the road?
They don't have to take the mag money. So the mag money is, is a grant that's available. The county, the county can, if I understand, this is county funds that we have received the, the funding for. So when it expires, I don't know if there's necessarily an expiration date, but the county has the power to transfer that to another project.
But why would they, if, if, if we're in need here, why would they transfer that? Why would they not help?
It's a negotiating tactic. They want to force, they want to force their hand and force us to take a road we don't want.
That's pretty obvious that that's their goal, is that at some point, they don't, they don't, this isn't something that they're interested in keeping forever. And so-
There's a lot of roads in the city I don't want either, but that doesn't mean that we get to hand them off to somebody and say either you do this or else.
Yeah, they, obviously their feeling is that this should be a local road, not a county road. Because it is an urbanized area, most of the county roads are a rural road. I guess I'm not, I really, I want the road improved. That's my goal. Will it get improved with the mill and fill? Absolutely. Will we get the safety enhancements that are coming from that? No. And so the, the question is, is what is the cost to us and what are the liabilities? And that's a decision that you guys have to decide on whether or not that it's worth it to get those enhancements done for, I guess, the potential of 30 years down the road, we then have to take over the ownership of the road.
And at, in the 30 years, they, it is, they have to have it at a 70 PSI, is that?
PCI, pavement condition index has to be returned at at least a 70, which is a pretty-
Well, they can't just take the road and not do anything for 30 years and then give it to us. They're required to upkeep it.
I have some questions as well. So who manages the construction of this? Is this a state?
County.
The county will do all of the contract, you know, subbing and contracts and all that kind of stuff, okay. And define widen. We're, we're going to have a little conversation in just a few minutes about a widening. So let, let's define that for me.
So widening of the road, you've got the existing pavement section that's been constructed. And let's say that you wanted to widen eight feet to the edge of the existing pavement. In those sections, it's planned to sock at the edge of asphalt. You dig down and you bring up a full section of pavement, which includes the pavement section, the road base section, and usually a granular borrow section underneath the road base. So anywhere that there's widening, you've got to create the pavement so that people can drive on it. Now, where there's existing pavement, there's already, that's, process has already been done. And the road's deteriorated, so the, the thought is in, in those areas, you can mill it down, rejuvenate the base and then bring up brand new asphalt. That way you also don't perpetuate the cracks through that. Right now, if you just mill and fill, any of the existing cracks eventually would come back up through that pavement in, in, in a couple of years likely. And so it's better to get rid of the entire pavement section, especially in the condition it's at, than it is just to mill and fill, so.
And the next question is if we have a section, so I know we have utilities that are running underneath the road?
We do.
As they are milling and digging down and we have, uh-
Water line replacement.
Water line replacement, how does that?
I think we've talked to them, we have some potential water line we'd need to replace that we would do in conjunction with the project.
So they dig it up, we then take a, we do some work at that point?
They make it out of this project and we pay for the water line replacement.
Yeah, there, I mean, there obviously is the babe, the, the benefit that if we wouldn't did it right now, then we would be replacing the section ourselves. So the asphalt and the base and things of that nature will be taken care of naturally with the project that they're doing. So it's going to be a much reduced cost, but yeah, there are sections of the water system that we need to replace in First East just because it's old, outdated, we've had leaks. We don't want it to leak again under that new road section. So even if they did the mill and fill, we'd have to consider that, whether or not we go in and still try to get that done and then repatch back before they do the mill and fill.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, keep going.
Thank you. I've been contacted by numerous residents with this question.
Okay.
About, sorry, about method of termination. I know there's 180 days in there, but what if both cities don't agree? Let's say Cedar Hills by some miracle tonight, votes it four, three to two, and then five years down the road says, now we're done. But we say we're not. This would be section five.
Section five, this agreement will automatically terminate at the end of its term herein, which is the 30 years. Prior to the automatic termination at the end of this agree, of the term of this agreement, either party, the county itself or entities, both cities agreeing to this agreement may terminate the agreement 180 days after providing written notice of termination to the other party. If entities, both cities agreeing, so both cities have to agree.
Correct. What do you do when?
What are you doing?
They, they want to take their ball and go home and-
Well, according to the agreement, both cities have to agree.
But, but at some point, one city could, or the county could walk away.
No, one city can't walk away according to the agreement.
Okay, both cities could walk away.
Yes, both cities can.
And the county could walk away and there seems like there's less repercussions for the county walking away than for the city walking away or cities. Because all they do, if we walk away, we still own it and we have to pay for that. This, that's-
Yeah, so that says in there, if, if we both agree and walk away, then we take over.
If, if on our own volition, then yes, we own it and we pay for it.
Can't imagine why, but-
If the county walks away.
There's a section in here.
Nothing really happens to them. I mean, there's no repercussion.
They have to pay us for the remaining term. If county terminates the agreement, entities and county will negotiate in good faith for the value that county will pay entities to uphold the full financial responsibility for the right of way and roadway maintenance requirements for the remaining term of the agreement. So if they walk away at 15 years, they have to pay some cash what they would have put in maintenance for the-
Up to 30 years?
Yes, up to the 30 years.
Are we going to have some kind of county road plan? What they're going to do over 30 years or what's expected if they do terminate at the year 15 or 16 or 17? What's the remaining 13 years look like? Would it be part of this good faith?
Oh, there's a, and it, let me keep reading. It answers that. In the event that the parties cannot agree on the amount, the parties-
Wait, what, what page are you on?
Uh, page seven, section five. In the event that the parties cannot agree on the amount, the parties agreed to hire a consultant to determine the amount. The parties will each pay half the cost of the consultant. After reaching an agreement for this amount upon payment to the entities, the right of way will be deeded to the entities. So if we can't in good faith figure out what that value is, then we would hire a third party consultant to determine what that value is.
What is the actual distance of the road? Are we at nine, is it nine?
I don't know the exact answer. I know, I can tell you how many square feet.
I don't like it. I only do it as my-
So we, we own, uh, 59% of the pavement is in Pleasant Grove, 41% of the pavement is in Cedar Hills.
Okay.
Square feet, that's-
Okay, yeah, I think-
Yeah, I heard four, so.
I, that's what I remember.
So Sid, even on a complete and total, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, even on a total reconstruct, pipes and everything, aren't you like at a million one, uh, mile?
On a full reconstruct of a road section, um, 1.2 million dollars, yeah.
So I don't know how they could come up with 18. I don't know how you could figure out a number of 18 million a mile. Because on a total reconstruct, you're looking at 1.2.
Yeah, but the reconstruct is the pavement section and not the additional improvements that we're looking for sidewalk or- I don't know where 15 million comes from either, but-
The number's never been discussed as we've talked with the county or with their city manager, so.
That's scary, you know, if you throw that number out there, that's scary to me. Don't, let's not approve it if it's going to be that.
We are kind of binding future councils here.
Well, so let, let me address one issue and then I'll kind of wrap up and, and we can, and you can have your discussion. One of the questions that was asked is what's our annual cost? Because we, we would be on the hook for snow plowing and pothole repair and signage and striping. I think Marty estimated-
It's only, it's only striping of the school-
Oh, sorry.
Crosswalks, not striping on the whole section.
It's just if we're going to add crosswalks, the, the regular road striping the county will do. Marty came up with the number about $3,500 per year. Money that we feel could probably be absorbed in the, in the street's budget as far as that's concerned in order to make that annual payment. But there is an annual cost to us. Want to make sure that that's clear and understood. It doesn't outline in agreement how much, that's an internal number that we have talked about. I, I just, I just want to say this. We've, Marty and I, it's not like, I don't want you to feel like we are putting pressure on you that we have to do this agreement. We think that right now today, with our discussions with the county, this is the best option, this is the best agreement today. Is there further negotiations? What happens to the grant money? What happens, we know that commissioner's going to change in January. There are other things that could play into this, um, which we don't necessarily have answers for today. At the end of 30 years, when this reverts back to the city, if it's at a PCI of 70, it's going to be in pretty decent condition, very good according to the PCI index. We would assume at that point that there is not going to need to be any sort of major overlays or anything like that for a few years after that. But there will eventually be a time that a future city council, the city, whether it's 40 years from now, 50 years from now, they're going to look at an overlay and it will be very expensive. So I, I don't want us to think that, um, uh, that somehow, I think everybody understands that at the end of 30 years, there is now a liability that's on the city's shoulders. We don't want to shy away from that. We want to make sure that that's understood because that's a big commitment that we're undertaking. Now, 30 years from now, will the city council be looking at this saying, I, we don't want this road, we're going to renegotiate with the county at that point? I, I don't know. I don't know, we don't, we just don't know that. So what we know is what's in front of us. If the city council, if you have hesitation about that, personally, I don't think it matters what Cedar Hills is doing. If Cedar Hills decides-
I, I thought we both had to be on board.
Well, if Cedar Hills decides to back out, we could enter into our own agreement with the county, just for our portion of the road.
But there was-
That's not what's on the table now, but the county, the county would work with us on that.
And when you say county, are we specifically talking about the county commissioners or who at the county when we say county are we talking about?
Well, the county commissioners are the ones that have the authorization to approve the agreement. Administratively, we're working with their public works director on the nuts and bolts of the agreement. But it is the three county commissioners that are saying, we're not going to do this unless we have the, unless the city takes the road in 30 years. I mean, those are the meetings, the mayor and I and David Bunker and-
So have they done this to any other cities?
I, I don't know. I don't know if there's ever been, I don't know what the process is when they have county roads that eventually get urbanized and, and cities, you know, annexed and it becomes now part of inner city and I don't know how the, the process is. I mean, normally, uh, in, in, in certain ways, we would probably say, you know, go ahead and do your four inch overlay, your mill and fill and we'll walk away. But the, the difference now is, is that there's 5.3 million dollars of grant money that could improve this road, we feel for safety reasons and storm drain reasons, that would be beneficial to us as a community. And so that, that, that's not money out of pocket for Pleasant Grove City. This is grant money of county funds that if, if it's not used, it will just be reallocated to another project.
So is, is it still nothing out of pocket if we don't partner with, if, or Pleasant Grove and Cedar Hills doesn't partner?
Yes, nothing out of pocket for us. Because the, I mean, really, it's county money, state money and the grant money. The capital cost at 9.3 million to have this road fully done and for Pleasant Grove City to pay zero, that's, that's pretty good. But we do understand in 30 years, yeah, there's, there's now going to be a liability that we need to maintain and take care of. If we do a good job of that, if we stay on top of our surface treatments and things like that, we'll stay out of the full blown reconstructs or some of these issues that could eventually cost the city millions of dollars.
Well, we, we are giving them 50 years to prepare for it.
Well.
Right?
30 years.
No, because they're going to give it to us at the 70. If we can treat it at that rate, we're looking at 50 years before we're having another conversation about this road.
It's just one way to look at it and-
I'd say 40.
Okay, 40.
42, 42 years.
Probably not going to happen, but.
So I think, I have one more question, sorry. Marty, maybe you can answer it. And maybe this is goes to the help, how they'll help us. It says, I think it's in section number one where it says county shall. The county reserves the right to adjust the conceptual design of the project to meet the needs of the entities and county. Is that them giving us olive branch and saying, we'll work with you, we'll design this to some of your needs? Have, have they proven that to you or?
Yeah, in our conversations with, with Richard Nielsen, um, you know, essentially what they're committed to is that 9.3. So they're going to work with us to get as much as that as possible. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but that's, that's, they've been very open to the concepts that we've been discussing with regards to, okay, additive alternates, you know, potentially adding a little bit more into the project. They, they're saying they just have a, a hard break at 9.3 million. They don't want to have to try to come up with other funding either. And so that's their hard break line. So if it's something above that, then that will be Pleasant Grove's choice to choose yes or no. Do we decide that that's, needs to be done, therefore we're willing to pitch in more money? We're saying we don't have any more money to put into it, so 9.3 is going to be the, the point that we just try to get to and get as close as we can so we utilize all that funding on the road and the improvements that are done, so.
We're, we're the ones asking for all the improvements. They're not the ones saying, hey, we want to blow up the concept plan and make it a 15 million dollar project because they want it to be a 4.8 billion dollar project. We're the ones asking to take that grant money and to expand the project. So if we turn around and say, we need to, we need to pull this back, they're going to be just fine. They're not the ones asking for the improvements in the first place. That's, that's the, that's the cities. We're the ones asking for the improvements with this grant money that's available. And, and it does say in here, the project will be completed in substantial compliance with project plans which are heretofore, attached hereto incorporated herein as exhibit A. That's the concept plan. That was, that's what we were working on when we put this agreement together. So the, the county's not going to come in and just, like I said, blow it all up and change it and do all these things. They've, they've agreed that they're, we have an idea of what we want to do and we're going to work towards that.
So beyond, I mean, after thirty years, we have the cost, but right now it's the thirty-five hundred dollars annually that you're saying, Marty?
Yeah.
For the plowing and the striping and the signs.
Right.
There won't be very many pothole monies for a while.
We shouldn't see potholes for a long time, yeah.
What else? Is there anything else out of pocket between now and then the next thirty years besides the annual maintenance?
So as far as the project that will be constructed, no. If we widen the road, then yes.
And widening when I'm talking about additional lanes, correct?
No, so we'll, we're talking about if we come in and, and put in something additional beyond the original project that's constructed. And that would be our responsibility to maintain.
Does that include additional lanes?
Yeah, if, if we all of a sudden said we want to take this, take it out here and go to five lanes instead of three or two.
We're talking a lot of money.
Oh, yeah, we're talking, we're getting into over ten million, ten, twenty million dollars.
I just said a hundred millions, we'll just go with that.
I like that.
Probably close.
And, and that's, that's, uh, gonna be a little bit relevant to our discussion on location of the, of the fire station, because, um, right now, there's no plans to widen that road.
From, from the county?
From, yeah, the county, definitely. They don't want to put an extra penny into this thing.
Or the state.
They, they're, what the county's saying is, look, we, we invested in North County Boulevard to really be the main north-south thoroughfare. And so that's, and that's where some of the traffic goes. Now, if people are trying to get to American Fort Canyon and they're coming from points south, they're probably not gonna go to North County Boulevard and then backtrack. And we still, I mean, we have plenty of residents that use this road getting to their house, I mean. But we do have out-of-city traffic that uses that. There are, yeah, there probably are issues even today as far as stacking when it comes to certain things. But if we're gonna get into the, let's go to five lanes, we are now into the, the tens of millions of dollars, which would be potentially a federal something or other grant that we'd have to-
And we're, and we're talking years down the road at this point?
Yeah, you'd have to have the support of the county, the mag, UDOT, everybody essentially going with you together saying, this is a big enough project that we want to do this and, and there's grants out there for large projects, they're called tiger grants, and they're for ten million plus doll, your, dollar grants. And, but you're competing with all of the big UDOTs of the states to get that money. So it's really competitive on that side, unless it's really proven that this has to be done. But with North County Boulevard there, I'm not sure that you're ever going to justify that cost.
That's like eight hundred in Orem, that was a lot of money.
A lot of money.
So just one thing on the timing. We, i-if, in order for the county to do this in twenty seventeen, um, we, we have to have resolution fairly quickly, I would say within the next month. If there is a longer term or if there's something that we want to go back to the county with or ask them to reconsider or to do something, I don't, we, we're not sure what that does with the grant monies as far as putting that in jeopardy. But that would push the project back to twenty eighteen. So that, they're, not that, you know, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen really matters a whole lot when you talk about a thirty-year deal. I think there, in some ways, we'd like to see this thing done sooner rather than later. But that's just a consideration that, um, if we're going to agree to this and do this, um, we need to decide fairly quickly.
Well, I consider it one of the worst roads in PG. I mean, dangerous in some areas and it's just, it's just bad.
I don't know if anybody's driven down Center Street at any amount of speed and hit the middle of that intersection. Done a little General Lee. Yep.
Worst road in PG is Donna Jolly's Road.
Unless you're going thirty miles an hour and you're going through that intersection. Anyway, so I don't, it's kind of fun, my kids have always loved it being in the back of the fifteen-passenger van, so, anyway. All right, any other questions? Any deliberation up here?
Questioned down, I'm good.
I think the five million dollar question really is, will, will the county do the work anyway? The morally right thing for them to do is to do the project, take the mag money that's been dedicated to this project regardless of what the cities do.
Amen, I agree one hundred percent.
And I think there's, I, and I guess what I'm, what I've heard in the last couple of days is more willingness to entertain that than I've heard in the past. I'm half tempted, maybe three-quarters tempted to try to call their bluff and to vote down this particular deal. I'm almost certain that that's what Cedar Hills is doing tonight.
So the mag money has not been dedicated to this project specifically?
It has been.
Oh, it has been?
But it is, it can be reallocated if due to inaction.
That, that's typically what happens, when they approve projects, they're looking out multiple years and that money is set aside for this project. As soon as it's decided that this project's not going forward, they'll reallocate those funds somewhere else and you'd have to actually come back in their cycle, which is probably in, not this next year, but the following year, before anything else could be reapplied for again, um, as far as the funding, so.
How long has that money been sitting there?
Since twenty fourteen, I think it was available twenty fifteen. So we're going on two years now that, that, that project could have moved forward, but just kind of been stalled out. Now, they, they've committed to keep it, the funding there, and if the county really came back and said, we need it for a little bit longer, that's up to that, that mag group to decide whether or not they're going to pull the funding or move forward on the pro, or whether or not they can hold that over. But that's really not up to the county at that point either, it's back to that mag group.
I think it was their patchwork, they're pretty good at bluffing, it's pretty terrible, right?
So not being a lawyer, the bluff thing doesn't really matter to me. So I, uh, it is the morally right thing for them to do. But I'm also very okay giving them a, a good faith support in that I want the road fixed. I don't want to spend millions of dollars doing it out of our own pocket because we don't have it, so.
Speaking of what Eric just said, and I think, but remember what you just said, Marty, who's gonna oversee the projects? We don't, so we get a better quality of work than what they've been doing.
So I'm not worried about the quality of work, right, as far as the project's concerned? Cause they'll have it designed by an engineering firm, they'll, it'll all be, you know-
And you'll be a part of that.
And will be a part of the whole overall concepts and things that are being constructed. I'm not worried about that. Maybe if you look at the long-term maintenance of the road for the next thirty years and you get twenty years out there, you know, they still at some point, before they give it back to us, have to bring it up to a standard that is acceptable, seventy PCI value. So, but I'm not worried about their ability to get the road constructed properly and adequately now.
Well, cause they'll contract that out, it's not the county crew.
The county crews aren't gonna do it.
The past history has shown otherwise.
Say that again?
Past work on the road has shown otherwise.
Well, that's their-
We're talking the difference, I think, between maintenance, which the county does.
And they've only owned this road for two years now.
I mean, UDOT's the one that failed on the maintenance.
UDOT owned it ever-
That's the state, not the county.
Even then, it was terrible.
We'd like Questor Gas to actually do the work.
So who does the plowing right now?
I believe the county still does the plowing.
I think the, does the state still do it?
Actually, they may be in their contract for the state to do it until they-
They're orange trucks.
Yeah, I think the state does it.
So I think we can all agree that it's not in our interest to have this road. The only reason we would take this road is if we felt like it was the only way we would get the mag money spent. But I'm not convinced that's the case. I think the mag money gets spent either way, if they feel enough pressure. And I think they delay because they feel like they may have a way to unload a depreciating asset that nobody wants. It's the road nobody wants, because it's just thirty years from now, a massive maintenance cost headache.
And I don't see that. I, I see in thirty years getting a, a, I mean, what's a seven, what's a, what's a road?
Road back.
In fifty years, it's a massive, the, the point is, we have roads in Pleasant Grove right now we can't take care of, the way we ought to.
This has been kicked down the road so many times.
And this would be adding to the weight that it's being kicked.
It's really hard to say where we're gonna be in thirty years with regards to technology and ability to redo things.
We'll all be on hover cars.
Yeah, we might not even be driving on roads, not just, so, no, it's hard to, it's hard to say exactly where we'll be in thirty years and whether or not the technology is going to be there. So that's a hard thing to answer, I guess.
The crystal ball thing is difficult.
And we won't get any of the Class C funding, so if we took the road over, we would get that maintenance funding from the state. It's very little. At the point that we do take the road over, then we will start receiving Class C funds for the road that we own, right? So right now, they'll continue to get the Class B funds for the county to maintain that road. And then in thirty years, when we take it over, we would start getting funding for that road into from Class C funds, so.
And the sell, so, and the sales tax formulate, formula would go up? And the, so the Class C and the sales tax, right? Isn't that, isn't the formula in that we, the quarter cent sales tax increase is-
One that got voted down, is what we're talking about?
No, the one that we, that was voted in.
Tied to sales and to population, it's not tied to roads.
It's not tied to, oh, okay.
The distance of roads, it's all population.
Okay.
Oh, you're talking about the gas.
The gas taxes by gallon.
Yeah, it's, it's not tied to sales tax, that was the bond proposition.
Okay, you're right. So gas tax, sorry. And, but it does, our, the formula for the, uh, the B and C is miles.
It's not lane miles, but I think what I'm hearing Marty say is, we're gonna get an extra fifteen thousand dollars a year, you know, that's not gonna-
Hey, that's, that's something.
We won't get that for thirty years, but then we'll start getting it after thirty years if we take the road over, that's, that's what would happen.
I mean, and speaking of what could happen down the road in thirty, fifty years, there could be more funding from the state, there could be new alternatives to, to funding. I mean, I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen.
Yeah.
There's a lot of what-ifs, but-
There are a lot of what-ifs.
The bottom line is, the road needs to be fixed, it's a safety issue, um, this is a way to do it, a mechanism to do it. And even if we hit the thirty years, and Marty, according to what you're saying, the road's gonna be in a good enough condition to where hopefully it'll last years beyond that to a certain extent. And, and then we can move forward with fixing it, but we don't have the money to do that right now. So I think this is a mechanism to do it.
This is.
And to make the road more safe.
Maybe if Cedar Hills doesn't vote for it, we'll do our part and then we'll put a toll booth in and we'll just charge them a little extra money.
You know, I drive through Cedar Hills sometimes, I don't know about that.
We'll get you, Scott.
They already have that one at the American Fort Canyon, they have that toll booth there.
That's true. All right, are we done discussing? Everybody know how they feel?
Ask my questions.
Any deliberation up here? You want to throw anything back and forth?
Any interest in a continuation from this body? We've got a new county commissioner coming in at the end of the year.
It's still, it's still only be two to one even if he did come in. I mean, and right now, it sounds like all the county commissioners are on board.
All three are in the same spot, at least in our discussions now. I don't know if any of you have talked to them individually and they're telling you anything different. And in our discussions, all three of them are telling us the same thing.
What do you think?
Why would we take it now?
Not constructing a dam.
You're gonna be spending a whole heck of a lot more money on that than-
Exactly, and I think, I think the commission will do the right thing in the end. I know where I stand, I'm inclined to, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know that, I don't. Like I said, all I know is the discussions we've had with them up to today. And there has been no give on, uh, taking the mag money unless we take the road. That has been their thing that they have hung their hat on through the whole negotiation.
When is the deadline?
There's not a deadline, but if we want it constructed-
If we want it in twenty seventeen, we need to decide within a month.
Within a month?
Yeah, because they need to, it needs to get designed right now and then out to bid in the next spring.
Marty?
And Scott, did they approve that at, didn't, didn't Richard say that it has been approved by the county commissioners?
Yeah, the county commissioners, uh, county commissioners approved it this morning.
So again, the nine point three million, tell me how comfortable you feel with that? Is there any way you get even close to the numbers that have been mentioned?
Not unless you do a totally different project, which might be more widening. If you're looking at the actual concept report, which was to provide the safety of the corridor widening, uh, with reasonable shoulders, things of that nature, then I would say, no, the concept report doesn't show that. Now, if you want to dream up some other big projects of putting roundabouts and intersections and-
Roundabouts.
And nice center medians with nice landscaping and things like that, then- Yes, we can get to the fifteen million pretty easily, but the concept report does not show that.
That's not, in our opinion, that's not an issue. The issue really is thirty years from now in the long-term maintenance, that's, that's the big one.
Okay.
Yeah, the fifty million dollar number I'd never heard before tonight from anyone, I don't think that's a real number.
You said you heard it from someone?
From Sid.
Did? I just don't know.
I think the real question is, yeah, do we want to stay away from the ownership of this road? Nobody wants the road. The county knows they've got one piece of leverage to try to force us to take the road and that's to say that they won't use the mag money. But the right thing to do with that mag money, which is dedicated to this project, is to take care of the safety in the county. That's their job, I think they'll do with their job in the end. But I don't think, if we're gonna call the bluff, we actually have to reject the deal. I think if we continue it, they'll continue to make the same stated position, because the bluff is still on the table. If we're gonna really call the bluff, we've got to reject the deal.
So if we, let's take his example here, we reject it, how much money is sitting there exactly for them to come and spend? Just, just to do what they need to do, bare minimum.
They have four point eight.
Four point eight million dollars is what they have available.
What is that gonna get us out here?
I guess it's the milling overlay.
Yeah, it gets the milling.
But no safety issues taken care of?
Well, none of the improvements.
And we can't fix any-
There's no curb and gutter, there's no, uh-
I'm sure we could probably work with, well, we'd probably do the project ourself if we decided to do the water lines. It probably wouldn't be part of the milling field, because that, that's a totally different project than the nine million dollar project.
But then we're paying for it ourselves.
Right.
Correct.
Well, the water line, we're gonna pay for anyway.
Yeah, you're stuck with that.
We, we, that's ours.
But we may have to go in and actually pave it back before they do the milling field project if we were planning to do that, so. If they do that, we might just say, well, let's, who cares if it breaks, we probably wouldn't say that.
No, we wouldn't say that, Marty, at all, ever.
Hopefully under a new road, a brand-new road, we don't want that to happen, if you're just talking about an overlaid road.
I would say, i-if the council wants to table it or vote no on it, um, and reengage the commissioners on your level. I mean, like I said, the mayor's been in most of our meetings, not all of them, but in most of the meetings that we had with some of these initial discussions. So there's, i-if, as elected officials, you want to see if you can get them to come off of that, that would be wonderful.
Basically, what you're saying is the mayor's been in the meetings and they still don't budge.
Yeah.
So what leverage are we gonna have?
Well, I don't know. I, I don't know if there's personal relationships with the county that can, um, that can do that. If there's political pressure that needs to be put on them, that's, that's, that's you guys' problem.
One's already leaving, I mean, I-
And if we wait for the new commissioner-
That's still only one vote out of three.
It is, it's, it's still a two to one.
And I don't, I just, I don't know.
Most effective tool we have to change the commissioner's mind is to vote this down tonight.
But there was a commissioner that went on public record saying that they would pull the mag money if we, if we didn't do it.
That's right. Is that a bluff or is that a real, real position?
I don't know, that's a lot of what-ifs, I don't, I don't know.
That's a question.
I'm kind of okay with it. So do I have a, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor Pro Tem Anderson, that we decline the deal. So I move that we decline Resolution twenty sixteen dash zero four-three authorizing the mayor pro tem to enter into an all-municipal cooperative agreement between Pleasant Grove, Utah County, and Cedar Hills regarding Canyon Road one hundred east by virtue of the fact that it's a bad financial deal for Pleasant Grove. Lynn, back me up, Lynn.
Can you explain how it's a bad financial deal?
Because the cost of the road in fifty years will so far exceed the four million dollars of mag money that we could theoretically lose, that it's a bad move for us financially, and I don't think we'll even lose the mag money. But that's a gut instinct.
What happens if we do lose it?
Then we still saved ourselves a fifty-year down the road huge financial burden.
But a lot of things could change, like Marty said, the technology, the funding from the state. I mean, there could be a lot of things that change and we're gonna do a lot of what-ifs to possibly pay millions of dollars out of the city pocket that we could be using on other roads.
Then we get a, what would you call it, a milling overlay instead of a reconstruct, right?
Yeah.
We're getting a milling overlay either way, but it's a question of what other improvements we might get with that mag money.
You will get a new pavement, it, it'll look nice and it'll ride nice, but it will not be widened, it will not have the other improvements that would be with the mag project. It'll, it'll, nobody's gonna know the difference right now, because it'll be a nice paved road when it's done. Again, give it another ten years with an overlay and then you start to see all the potholes recur and all of the cracks coming through and all the same things occurring. So that, that's just the nature of, uh, an overlay, so.
You know, I, I wouldn't mind continuing it for a couple of weeks so we can talk to some of the commissioners one-on-one. I'd like to also hear the mayor's thoughts in council meeting, and then also I want to find out what happened to Cedar Hills tonight. So I wouldn't mind continuing for a couple of weeks. So, I wouldn't mind continuing for a couple of weeks.
All right, we have, we have a motion on the table.
Ben already has a motion on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a second to that motion? No. So, do I have another motion?
Can we, we can continue this to November first?
November first, yeah.
You wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to continue this until November first.
I have a motion by Eric that we continue to the first, and I have a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Fine with that, yeah, aye.
All right, we have a unanimous aye on a continuation to November first.
Any opposed?
Are, no.
Can someone go run up to Cedar Hills and see what they did?
Are there any opposed?
I will.
Okay.
Run up to Cedar Hills virtually.
All right, so I don't really know how to sign this.
I'll let the whole, yeah.
Are you here for the annexation petition? Yep, let's do that.
No, some of us are waiting for eleven A, though.
That's right.
We'll just talk about it quickly.
I'll let you guys decide what-
Rock, paper, scissors, here we go.
Could someone get me a sandwich?
I don't know.
Cause that's my vote, that I live us. So, like, I don't do anything. Okay, look at me, I'm just doing like that. Okay, where am I moving as of right now? Where are we going? Eleven?
We have, we probably better do eleven A. We've had a lot of people there.
You better wait for Sid to come back then.
No, let's just do this really fast.
Oh, I can burn through this, trust me. Marty, do you have, is it on up there?
Um, are you logged in there?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put up a PowerPoint here.
All right, so we continued. I love this council. All right, eleven A, discussion on potential locations for the future fire station, if funded. Lynn?
I like, I like that. I like the positivity there.
It's very similar to mag money.
Sitting there, waiting to be spent.
Then we can talk about it.
The problem with continuing is that they're gonna not move forward until they have some kind of definitive statement from us. We've got to-
Talking about- It gives you time to go talk to them. It gives you two-
It gives us time to talk to them, but they're not gonna change their public stance until the deal's rejected. They're gonna still tell us the same thing.
All right, you talk to them and then you come back to it.
I'll talk to them.
All right.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, but the best way to make them to move is to shut down the whole deal and they'll just move.
Well, two weeks ago, we had a public hearing on the location, potential locations of the fire station. With the two potential locations, one being what we call the downtown site, which would essentially be at least for the fire station, where the old rec center is and the property in front of it, and then the pipe plant site, those are the, the two sites that have been considered. What I'm gonna show you, I have seven slides here. Some of it are questions that the council has sent to me that they wanted answers to. I think I've answered almost all the questions. There's a couple we didn't have information on that we still have, I think we can get to you before November first. And, but through the course of the presentation, if I haven't answered some of your questions, you know, please just jump in and do this. Now, this is, is what staff has put together. When I say staff, this is mostly me, taking information that we've gathered over time. A lot of the information is what we've gotten from the architects. Some of it is, I think, just public input as time has gone on. Ken, or can you hit the light for this over here? The, the Public Safety Building Committee, they talked about site locations, they did not reach a conclusion, they, and I, I need to be careful because I, I mean, I sat in on those meetings, but I do not represent them. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to characterize, and we do have Christie here, I don't know if everybody knows. So, if I start getting a little bit out of, out of turn here, Christie, you can correct me, but, in essence, the, the Public Safety Building Committee narrowed it down to the two sites and wanted to give it back to the council for you to decide. They did create a concerns list, I don't know, pros and cons, or whatever you wanna call it. I believe you sat in on those meetings when they had those, and those have been emailed to you. So, I, I don't address those in here, even though some of those concerns that were talked about will just be represented here, just by virtue of information that we have. So, the first thing is the construction cost, and this is the estimates from Think Architecture. That was the architect that was hired to help the Public Safety Building Committee research the costs of the buildings. These estimates don't include the cost or value of the land, which we'll get into in just a second. The downtown site cost estimate for what we'd call the sticks and bricks is five million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Now, this cost does include the demolition of the old rec, and actually, I think, Ben, you asked, that does include the taking out the asphalt, and I verified that with the architect, that-
Upgrades to the infrastructure?
Well, I don't think so, as far as the lines coming into it.
That's when we do First East.
I, I don't-
I don't know what site prep means exactly, everything that it-
Yeah, site prep just means that the asphalt's coming out too. I don't know about necessarily the curb and gutter, if it's in decent condition, I don't know why we would, you know, pull that out if we don't have to. But if it's a water line coming in from the main line into the building, I don't know if we know what condition that is, I'd-
What we, what we do know is that, that these plans aren't planning to reconstruct the water line in Second South or in Sixth West, you know, the, the facilities are there and able to provide the service to the buildings and adequate fire pressure and things of that nature for the protection of those buildings without doing upgrades to these areas, so.
It's still working.
Just connecting and making the connections at some point, that connection will have to be made, but we aren't doing upgrades down the road to be able to make that connection.
There isn't an upload, we're still, right? We don't have to increase size of pipe because we're already servicing the-
Yeah, there's, well, we don't anticipate that, and we don't know what the condition of the line is.
That would be the contingency.
That is maybe part of a contingency, once we get in there and the line's in bad shape, we will need to replace it. But, we're just talking about a service line, not a main line out on the road. The cost at the pipe plant for the fire station is five million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four. It is a little bit less because the design standards are different out there than they are downtown, is probably the big thing. Also, you don't have the cost of demoing the rec, rec center as part of that, so that cost is a little cheaper. When we talk about the land downtown, the property is currently owned by the general fund of the city, meaning that we would not have to purchase it. There is value to this property, I think this is one of the things the Public Safety Building Committee talked a little bit about. The value is undetermined, as far as we have not had an appraisal on this property. We don't know what it's worth. If we want to determine the value to a dollar amount, we would need to pay for an appraisal. The property would actually need to be sold in order for it to have a cash value. So, that's if, if the site ends up at pipe plant and we look at the value of this property and we want to, in essence, sell it to put money towards the construction over there, we would need to sell it in order to cash in on the value. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? There's a value and there's cash, and so, there, they are two different things. At the pipe plant, that property is currently owned by the Storm Brain Fund of the city. The general fund must make a payment of a hundred and fifty-five thousand per acre to reimburse the Storm Brain Fund. A two-acre site would be three hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, that cost would add into the pipe plant costs there as far as land plus construction. The site footprint downtown is one point oh five acres. So, it's just this property that, that's just right here as I'm pointing. It's not a very big site, but that's, that's what's allocated for, or what we have room for, for the fire station. The pipe plant site, as currently designed by the architect, is, is a two-acre site. The parking, so there's no city requirement for the number of stalls, that's really our call as a city. I know that the architect talked to both the chiefs about what they needed for parking. For downtown, if we have, use the downtown site, be able to give you a visual on this one here. All right, my computer's not letting me do this. In essence, the fire personnel would have to be on street parking. It would be, you know, parking that's kinda to the side of the park out there. There would be a, a parking lot in between the fire and the police building. Right now, that would be twenty-four stalls, that, that would be parking specifically for the police. Now, could a couple of those stalls be shared? Yes, so we can probably figure out a way to do that. This also accounts for closing down First South and, and creating parking there. The architect said we could get twenty-seven stalls there, which would be accommodating for the public, for their use of court, police, or fire, as far as that's concerned. Now, when the parking, I think would be tight, I think there's no doubt about that, and would need to be evaluated with the overall parking scheme with other city facilities. So, for instance, we have talked about as a city, over by the Beck home, where we have the glass recycle of turning that into a parking lot, which we think we could get, like, thirty-five stalls there. And if we did that, then we could move some of the city employee parking and some of the public parking over there, which could free up space currently where community development would go, or where our current police station is. Some of that parking could be used for some of the employees, the police and fire employees. They, they have talked about secure parking, that, that's not, as far as the number of stalls, I don't think that really changes anything. I, I think the main point, I guess, as I see it, is that downtown does consolidate our parking. Now, if the building's designed differently, there's, I mean, if you choose to go up and, and reduce the footprint on the police, that could create a few, a little bit more parking. That could be handled in the design phase, but, as currently constituted, as the architect has done that, the fire personnel would be parking on street. Now, that's not the fire trucks and stuff that we have, this is for the employees that are working here.
And that, you said they'd be parking on the street if we didn't use, if the additional parking possibly, potentially, by the glass recycling? That hasn't been factored in at all?
No, it's not, but, but it could be. I mean, and that's, that's something that would just have to be figured out later on through the design process. Some of these things, I mean, we, we just have a block, I mean, it just says, here's a potential footprint, and the design could change some of that, but what we know today is, this is where we're at.
And the potential, tell me again, the number that you, that, the potential for the glass recycling lot?
Oh, I threw out the number thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
I mean, there's some decent area over there.
Based on what?
Just based on a visual as to, here's how many stalls we can get in the same size area on my eyes. So, it's not scientific.
Just wanted to know what it was based on.
We can use slide.
So, let's say twenty-five?
Obviously, we haven't designed it, so.
Actually, we already have a design of it, but I didn't pull that number, so I don't know what it is. We've already done a, a concept layout of what the parking lot could look like, but it could change.
We did that a couple of years ago, and, I, I'm just saying, that's a possibility that could relieve some pressure on parking, but I'm not an engineer.
Well, it'd be better for the glass recyclers, they don't have to go four-wheeling to get to the-
So, at the pipe plant, if the location is chosen at the pipe plant, according to that footprint and that two-acre site, there's twenty-six stalls for the fire department, which includes the public parking. I believe it's fourteen stalls for employees and twelve for public. So, the parking options out at the pipe plant, definitely, there's more flexibility and space due to the footprint. The old rec center downtown, if we were to build this downtown, the old, old rec center would be raised and the site would be used for the future fire station. If we did the fire station out at the pipe plant, for the time being, the old rec can stay. I think there is some long-term considerations we need to figure out with that building. And so, to say that that would stay in perpetuity, I don't know if that's fair. Now, we haven't had, the city council has not had a discussion about the long-term viability use of, of the old rec center. So, I just think it needs to be understood that if we go out to the pipe plant, whether that building's gonna stay for sure or not has not, that discussion has not happened. I don't wanna put up here that that building will stay forever, so I didn't put that up there. As I said, city council would need to consider the future of the old rec regardless of the fire station location. Other considerations concerning the old rec. The old rec right now is, is a community gathering place. It's used for boutiques, dances, practices, as far as recreational sports, and we have some miscellaneous use in regards to that. We currently, when I say we have a net revenue, when we take our expenses to heat it and to do those types of things, our annual expenses, and then the money that we generate off of renting the building, at, at this point, it's about eighty-five hundred dollars a year of net revenue. I think there needs to be an understanding, and it's jumping down another bullet point, that we currently put very minimal resources into the upkeep and maintenance of this building. So, even though it might be generating eighty-five hundred dollars of revenue, it has more than eighty-five hundred dollars of needs in order for that to become a proper building. There is a historical significance of that building. It is on the historical registry, and one of the things that came up a couple of weeks ago, for some, it was absolutely, we want the city to keep the building, under no circumstances, or under all circumstances, we want the city to keep the building. There were a couple that said, you know what, if you're gonna tear it down, let's figure out a way to preserve and honor it. So, whether I was using some of the brick or some of those things, that was some of the things that were mentioned a couple of weeks ago. So, that's just something for the city council to figure out, that if, if it does get torn down, then we need to figure out a way to maybe preserve and honor, but also addressing the historical situation. According to Bowen and Collins-
Wait, you talked to the historical?
Oh, that's the last bullet point there.
Oh, hey, sorry, I'm getting ahead. Okay, go back to Bowen and Collins.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to build up to things.
My gosh, I'm blowing it.
Yeah. So, according to Bowen and Collins, this structural study that was done, you know, a year and a half ago, two years ago, it would cost to, just over two point five million for life safety occupancy. So, what life safety means is if the earthquake comes, that's the second highest standard. The highest standard is immediate occupancy, meaning if the earthquake comes, everything, this building is built so well that you can stay in the building, no problem. You're still gonna have your, your, all your utilities are gonna work, you're gonna have your power, you're gonna be able to operate. Immediate occupancy, a lot of times, a public safety building's immediate occupancy, so that if you have a big earthquake, it needs to still be functional because those are services you're providing. For something like that, they call it life safety, meaning you might have some cracking and things like that. Generally speaking, the building's not gonna come down on anybody, and the people inside should be safe, but there might be some issues with the building to a point that you might not be able to continue just working through the whole process. So, life safety is what the recommendation from Bowen and Collins is, if we're gonna continue to use this as a rec center, to have it a life safety occupancy. The two point five is broken down into seismically retrofitted, which I think was about a million dollars. The updated utilities, meaning redoing the plumbing and the heating and the plumbing, heating, power stuff in there, that was about five hundred thousand, and then what they called architectural fixes was about another million. That would be taking care of the facade, where we have cracks in the facade, and maybe other things inside the building that just need an upkeep as far as an architectural look, so.
Does this also bring it up to ADA compliant?
No, it doesn't change the use.
I don't remember if that did, if that number did or not. That, if that did, that would fall under the architectural fixes, but I don't, I don't recall if that was in there or not. So, I called the state. I looked on their website, they have two grant programs, well, they have one that they administer, and then there's a federal one. The one that they administer, the grants are up to ten thousand dollars, and it's a matching grant and can be used for various things. Generally speaking, the- Generally speaking, most of those grants are businesses on a main street somewhere where they're trying to keep the, you know, the historic facade, something that maybe we would use in our downtown main street, but it's not meant for a major renovation project that this has. The federal one, when I got on their website, and I talked to the lady at the state, I said, "Tell me what you know about the federal." She said, "Well, most of these grants, again, are about $10,000." And I said, "When I get on their website, there's not even a way to access the grants. They are just asking for money." So, she said, "I don't think they give money anymore," at least at this point, to her knowledge. So, I guess the bottom line on grants is there's not a million-dollar, $2-million-dollar grant available, at least from the research I did. And again, that was calling the state historic preservation office and asking, you know, how they do these. I think most of the time, when you have the major projects, it's privately funded, or it is government-funded, as far as that's concerned. Okay, response times. I will turn this over to Chief Thomas. He's the one that put this information together, and I'll let him explain what the numbers mean.
From here?
You know, from wherever.
Okay, you guys, you want to come up there?
No, I'd like you to come up here.
We want to see you, Dave. While he walks up, I'll give everybody an update. Cedar Hills voted tonight 4 to 1 to reject the deal, just reject it outright. They said they won't talk with the county again until the county spends all the MAG money fixing things the right way. That's where Cedar Hills at, it was a 4-1.
I like the 1.
Okay, to say that people live and die based on our response, on the fire department's response, is really true. And then, to add to that, you know, if we try to put in perspective the rate of growth of fire, there is an exponential relationship between the duration of a fire and its intensity and the damage that it causes, and the time it takes for us to get there. So, if we drive slow, then the fire gets bigger, I guess is essentially what I'm saying. And so, being able to arrive on scene in the most expeditious manner is important to us. So, with the numbers that you see here, there's not a lot of explanation that is necessarily, that is necessary, because it is what it is. That's how long it takes. Now, we did this in an ambulance. We didn't do it in a fire truck, so you can figure that a fire truck is going to be at least a minute to two minutes behind. They don't go as fast, they don't accelerate as quickly and stuff, and ambulances are built to just be a little more maneuverable, and they're smaller. So, you have to add that for a fire apparatus to arrive. Those were driven in the middle of the day. They weren't driven at night, or at 5:00 in the evening, or at 8:00 in the morning, or anything like that. And they were driven at posted speed limits. So, there's nothing really magic there. Would times get better if we went lights and siren? Well, probably, a little. Sometimes not, because sometimes lights and siren just kind of jams things up, and we actually end up taking it a little bit longer, because sometimes people don't know what to do, and they don't, they can't get out of our way. So, there's a little bit of a trade-off there. However, they are what they are, and so, you can kind of take them as face value. You can see that, in the end, based on where you are in the city, one place is going to help you more than the other, or not. There's just not going to be that kind of difference. If you live in one end of town, then, and we have the fire station in one place, then it's going to take us longer to get there. If we have the station in another part of town, and you still live in the same place, we might get there a little quicker. Does that make sense? It's all pretty simple. So, there's not a lot of magic involved here. We did round up the minutes, because you can kill 30 seconds just waiting for a car to go by at a stop sign, and you can kill two minutes at a red light. So, that's kind of, that's kind of where we are with the location. I have some real concerns with traffic, with future traffic, and certain accesses in certain areas and stuff, that I think directly needs to be addressed when it comes to this kind of stuff. Those are studies that is really beyond my capability, but I think that that's something that probably ought to be addressed a little bit. And so, that would be my only concern with those, is making sure that whatever we have in the future, whatever we have planned in the future, that it's going to include a response, or, yeah, going to include a response from a fire station regardless of where it's located. So, we make sure we have the quickest route available to us. Okay?
David, what, is there any preference to either one of these locations, or as insurance rates go?
No, I don't think so. Most insurance rates are set by a company and probably an area, as opposed to an area like Utah County or something like that. I don't think that they actually go into a neighborhood and say, okay, look at that and that and that and that. They're all 50 feet within a fire station, we're going to give them a better rate.
What about our rating with...
So, and that's where it counts. And so, our rating at 4 gives the entire city pretty much the same rating. The people that really benefit from that aren't necessarily the homeowners, but the business owners. Commercial businesses usually end up reaping the most rewards from that.
A lot of advantage either direction.
Yeah, because when it comes down to it, most homes are well within our, well within our abilities to fight a fire there. But when you get a larger building, then they really start to scrutinize things. They want to see if the fire department is capable of fighting a fire in a great big building. And so, oftentimes, that's where that ISO rating comes in, and has the heaviest weight.
Have you, you yourself, of preference?
Of the location? I lean one way, and on the most part, it's because of, because of the responses. I have a huge issue with that intersection, and so does a 2009 traffic study that they did for this city. I have a huge issue with that intersection at 600 and Center Street. That's a huge concern for me. We've hit that before, and it's just nigh on impossible. And even as I was reading today this traffic study that was done in 2009, that was one of the priority intersections, because, because of how it interacts with State Street, with that larger intersection right there by Macy's, and then that one, the other smaller intersection that crosses a railroad track at 600, and how it interacts there. And we've been through there before, and it's almost, it's nigh on impossible for us to break through there. There's no place for traffic to go. It's one of those things where you just turn your siren off and just wait. Just wait for people to finally get out of the way, because you can't go around them. They don't have anywhere to go, and you have a line of traffic at the busy times, making a left turn. The other line is making right or left turns, and it's just, it's just jammed up. If we can fix that problem, then the pipe plant wouldn't look too, wouldn't look as bad, but that creates a real problem. And the other issue that I have there are the railroad tracks themselves. They'll never give up that right of way. What I think they'll do is expand the usage. Right now, we run a little freight train down there, and it's really cute. You know, it's very nostalgic to see those guys go up and down there. For the business owners that they service, then it really, I think that it does a lot for them. However, you know that there is more functionality to those tracks, and as the population continues to grow, I see in the future the potential of that becoming more passenger transport. With that, then we'll see more trains going back and forth and stuff, and that just causes even more problems for me, having to sit there, because I don't have a way around that. If trains are running up and down there, I can't get around that. From this area here, I can get around those railroad tracks and into any part of town. So, those are just some of my concerns with just that little area right there.
It is, in 20 years, 20 to 30 years, it is, I mean, it's on the transportation plan to be a tracks.
So, that's just some of the concerns I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mind if I ask? You indicate here that all driving tests were completed, driving without lights and sirens.
Right.
Was there any value in doing some with lights and sirens?
No, because it's illegal.
Is it inappropriate?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's illegal. I can't just drive around town with lights and siren on. But even if we did, then I don't know what we would see. I think that we would see an improvement on the most part, you know, an improvement generally, because we could go a little bit faster, and we could get around traffic. And so...
I think part of that's just the relationship to each other.
Yeah.
So, if we're doing it consistently from both locations, I think it's showing the relationship. If it's lights and sirens, maybe all those numbers...
Go down a little bit.
...by a minute, but the relationship, I think, stays the same. That's all, that's all I see.
The guys would love to be able to do that, though. If they could just drive around town with the lights and siren on, it'd be fun.
Permission for one-time study.
We'd have to have a police officer in front and back, helping us.
There we go. Seems like a legitimate reason to me.
Because we have a couple of guys to sit around.
Okay, one of the things that was requested is our master plan out at the pipe plant, and how the fire station potential location there would play into the master plan. So, I've asked Marty to, if you remember, he gave us a presentation at our retreat last year, and then he also gave a presentation to the committee, showing kind of what the future discussion has been on, really, the whole 40 acres.
You have four minutes, Marty.
Perfect. I'll take one of those.
We're going to 11:00. Eric, just settle in.
I'm good.
I'm sorry, sir.
So, this is the concept, kind of the layout that we discussed at the budget retreat. I believe this is also discussed with the PSB committee, kind of an overall layout. Now, the only thing I've changed is, before, there was a look at like four acres, and right now, I just split that property in half, because we're talking about two acres here on the corner. So, this kind of represents two acres. Kind of the overall concept was to move parks and public works out and onto this site. We talked about the cemetery, potential expansion here, which is already kind of in the works. Then, we've also got the potential of the Fowles property becoming part of the cemetery at some point, and so, that was discussed. And then, you can see the detention facility that we've talked about with parks being here, public works potentially being in this area. So, what that leaves you is about a little over 10 acres here, plus two acres there in this concept, so about 12 acres. And what's to be done with the remaining property, that's, that could be determined at some later date, and how this all flows and works out. But that's, that's what we discussed. What we understood was kind of a direction to look, you know, looking forward that we may go on that. There's been discussion about parks and soccer fields, and even, you know, selling it for development type of concepts, and so, that's all the options that could be looked at.
So, the way I see it is, there's plenty of room. If we choose to do the fire station, we have plenty of room to do that. If we choose not to do the fire station there, then it's either probably park space, cemetery space, or we could sell it to a residential developer, and it could become homes. So, this likely would not be any future expansion for public works, that's more in this area, and this likely up here would not be used for storm drain purposes, because the flow all heads down this direction, so...
I have a question. This is for Marty.
Yes.
Concerning the nuclear waste facility out there, or aka decant facility, can you talk to us a little bit about that, and what that actually means?
Okay.
Decant?
Yes. Yeah, happy to do it. So, a decant facility essentially is, when we back things out of the storm drain, so if we're cleaning a storm drain line, we get a lot of stuff in the storm drains, then we have to take it and dispose it.
By stuff, you're... Not sewage.
No, 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 it's storm drain. So, it's coming from the streets and trees and decom, you get decomposed animals sometimes, you get leaves.
It's actually illegal to dump oil, so it's not even...
Right.
Well, it's illegal.
We all live downstream.
Well, there's a reason that you have a decant facility, and that is because you want to take those materials that could potentially get into a waterway, and take those and make sure that they don't. So, that's why you clean those storm drains. Now, with the decant facility, essentially, you're dumping all of that into a sealed container that then flows to the sewer, and then the sewer's able to process those, and then, once it's dried out, you take and you haul it off to a known facility. Generally, it's not nuclear, it's not radioactive, it's not something that you have to haul off to some special dump site to do that. It generally is just hauled off as waste. Now, with regards to what we're, if you're interested in what we're currently doing, we currently don't flow off the site as a temporary means. We're in the process of designing our decant facility. Plans are supposed to be done this month. Hopefully, we'll put it out to bid in November and get under construction, so in the next few months, we should have our decant facility constructed. Right now, we have a hole dug in the ground, and all of it goes there, and then the water either evaporates, goes into the ground. We do the same thing as far as kind of a drying bed. There is no water that flows out of it, onto, into a ditch or something of that nature, so everything's kind of contained there on that site. It's kind of right in the middle of the site is where it's currently located.
Thank you, I hope that enlightens some people, so...
If it was radioactive, we could sell it to a foreign country and pay for the fire station, right?
I like it.
Sure.
If I can just add, if this were to be turned into, let's say, park space, the general fund would need to pay the storm drain fund for that land to put a park on it. If it were to turn into cemetery space, the cemetery fund would need to pay back the storm drain fund. If it were to be developed, whatever we sell the property for, that money would go back into the storm drain. So, just so we have an understanding that that's how it flows with, there is a cost. If we're going to put a park out there, there is a cost for the land. Okay, you done, Marty?
If you want me to be. Oh, by the way, I quickly checked your parking.
Yes.
And we're, we're close to the 35 to 40.
Yes!
Nailed it. Eyeball on it, nailed it.
That's absolutely maximizing every parking stall you can get in there.
I like it, I like it. I think that just made my...
I actually just did that to Megan, forget it, it's 25.
You are right, Scott.
You're going to have a good day tomorrow.
It's around 35. If you maximize all the parking that you could get there in that space, you're right around 35 to 40.
Okay, you're up now, I can...
Scott, while you're waiting for your intangibles to come up, can I just make one thing? I wanted to mention this while I was up there. When I mentioned that I had a little bit of a preference one place, you know, over the pipe plant. I think I really need to say... This isn't like a personal preference. I don't have some grandiose hope that I can build a big, nice fire station so everybody can see it. I really feel like my job is to do the greatest good for the, for the highest number of people. I am an advocate for every person in this city. Regardless of where the fire station goes, if I see that there is a potential problem somewhere that could affect the citizens, I can't just turn a blind eye to that. And so, that's kind of what, kind of pushes me to lean toward the downtown area, because I really think that my response times are going to be less inhibited into the future from here.
Thank you.
Okay, so, just because I was able to pull this up, I just want to illustrate what I was talking about on the parking. This is 24 stalls here, this is 27 stalls here. So, with the fire station here, there could be some potential shared parking with the police here, and then, this would be the public parking. We would have, the current parking up here, where community development would not need currently all the stalls that are being used by the police department. And then, what's not shown on the map is the potential 35 stalls. So, the parking could be shifted a little bit, but as currently designed, and the intent of what the architect had, is that the police would end, or the fire would end up parking on street here, by the park. Well, what?
This building? Yes, what?
The one that we're in? Yes, but that's where that is, right there.
Oh.
Yeah, that's where the police and courts will go. And then, this is how it is out at the pipe plant. So, this is 12 spots here and 14 spots here, so this is public, this would be for the employees. So, you can see there, the parking's not an issue out there. Okay, let's get back to... Okay, let's get back to. Okay, so we have what we call the intangibles, or what we would call non-cost concerns. A lot of these came up in our public hearing two weeks ago. On the last bullet point, I just, I call this citizen input. We've put it on our website. If people want to comment on the two different locations, they can comment on that website. The email comes to me, I forward it to the elected officials. So that's, and we have received a few of those over the last two weeks. And I am assuming that council members have been receiving personal emails from people and phone calls and things like that. So when it comes to intangibles, I'm sure you've had your own interactions with the public. So I, I tried to characterize, I mean, you were all here at the meeting two weeks ago. I attached Tina's notes, we had forty-six people speak. Tina kept some notes on each person, just on what they said. So I know a lot of you kept your own notes on the, on the forty-six speakers, but that's just as a reference thing for you. I just pulled out some of those for the pipe plant. We had some people that were concerned about traffic noise, there are kids in the area, noise during a burial since we're going to be proximity to the cemetery. A couple of people talked about four hundred north being a bad road, meaning there's a little swerve in it or something like that. Eight hundred north wasn't brought up, that, that's a road that does not go connect all the way through to one hundred east. And then we have the railroad tracks, which Chief Thomas addressed. We also had people say there's a bigger footprint, there's opportunity to expand, there's more room for parking, so there were some that came and said there is a benefit for this facility going out there. On the downtown site, we had some saying, or at least one say, we want this whole block to become a city park. We, we had quite a few people say we wanted to preserve historic building. Some had different iterations of what that meant. Strawberry Days was brought up, where's the carnival going to go if we're going to now be using two hundred south? Loss of green space, the way it's currently designed, we don't anticipate a loss of green space, but a couple of people did mention that as a concern, so I put it up here. It was mentioned that the smaller footprint downtown is a concern. The cost to renovate the old rec was something that was brought up. If we're going to keep that building, there is a substantial cost to doing that. And then it was brought up that there is a benefit, the proximity to the police and city hall, police courts and, fire doesn't really use courts, but more proximity to police and city hall has a, has a kind of an intangible benefit. There's more than that than what I just listed. I just summarized a few of the comments, and so I think the council's well aware of what those are. I just, I wanted to have that up there. Okay, these are a few questions that were asked by council members that, for the most part, we had, we have answers to. One is can, can the current layout of building accommodate a thirty-year build-out? According to the architect, the answer is yes with the current size as far as square footage and things like that. That does have a little bit of a relationship to the site based on how, what our footprints are and how big the buildings are. What is the next stage of site prep for both sites? And really, it's the same. The architect recommends that we do a soils report on both sites, and we, and survey to define the boundaries, to make sure we're quite clear what the boundaries are going to be for the, for the site. We do have a, I think it's called a level-one environmental study that was done on the pipe plant before we purchased that property. They go in, they do some soil sampling. It came back that it was fine out there as far as that's concerned. I don't know what a level-two environmental study is. I don't know if there's something that goes deeper, but as far as the level-one, they did not see any concerns with the, with the soils out there. How does one hundred east affect the downtown site? We talked a little bit about this. There's currently no plans to widen it. Current layout allows for widening of one hundred east with the zero setback. So they have moved the, the footprint of the building for the fire station to a point that if it does get widened and we need another twenty feet, there, it would take away a setback, but we would be able to fit the road and the building. So if zero setback is a concern, then that's something that you need to be worried of if it goes downtown, and if the road is installed. So like I said, the installation of North County Boulevard was to become the major north-south corridor. Winding one hundred east would be extremely expensive, and it's hard to predict today if we'll ever need to do that. How many schools, crosswalks, church buildings, and residents are within one mile radius of each of the proposed locations? I, we didn't have time to get that information, but I think we can have that hopefully maybe by the end of the week or early next week and back to you so that you have that. There is a way to do that with our GIS. It, it does take some man-hours because I think we physically have to kind of count some of those things, but that would probably be good information to have as far as the impact of right around each station site. How many people participate in the various boutiques each year? We don't have that information, we don't do the boutiques. We could probably make a couple of phone calls and see if we can get some numbers from them, so we'll follow up on that, see if we can get a number for that. Does the construction timeline vary per site? It does a little bit. At the pipe plant, it'd be about ten months for the fire station, for the downtown, twelve months, and the architect just said the added time would be for the demolition of the old rec. What are the, sorry, was there a question?
One day.
I'm thinking one day with dynamite.
Oh.
Sid and I can just get crazy with our, my fifteen passenger van.
It's the hauling it out, is, that's what takes.
Talk about launching off a center.
If you want to bring your wheelbarrow down, maybe we can speed that process up. What are reasonable construction and utilization staging options for city buildings for each location? If it's at the pipe plant, we would construct the fire station just right away. We would eventually, once we could move the fire personnel over there, we would tear down the old fire station and our community development, and we would construct the police and courts downtown, right here on this, where we're currently at. If we do this downtown, we would have to take down the old rec center first, then we would construct the fire station on that site, then we would move the fire personnel to the new fire station. We would take this down and construct the police and courts. Right now, the proposal is for that to be two separate buildings. Under both scenarios, we would need temporary housing for community development because this would be torn down before we move the police out. And so we would have, you know, a ten-month, maybe one-year window where we need to figure out what to do with community development, so.
Do you have any, any ideas about that?
We've talked about using the seminary building. We'd have to do a little bit of work there, hopefully nothing too major.
Heard a good suggestion for tiny homes.
Yeah, we can maybe set up.
Tiny homes.
We, we could, we could rent a trailer. What do they call those, the school kids are in?
Modular buildings.
Yeah, something like that, the modulators.
Hey, Lori, that is us in a little while, so.
So that's, but that, that cost does not affect the sites because it's same for both sites. So that's all I have as far as presentation. We do have this on the agenda in two weeks, and we have worded it to say that the city council has the option to give a preference. You have the option to not declare a site, that's up to you. If you do, we would suggest that it's a preference at this point because once we get into design, it's possible if we chose downtown and we start designing and we just can't fit it, that we'll end up at the pipe plant.
Right.
So I think the council needs just a touch bit of breathing room that once we get into design, that that site could possibly change, so.
Scott, with, with either site, what are we looking at for actual breaking ground time? I mean, it's all to be designed, you know, engineered, so what are we looking at?
That's a great question, and maybe the architect could answer that a little better. The, if we get approved on the funding, that would be, you know, in, in three weeks. And so when we actually take the bond out, it's going to be at our discretion because we would likely do that, I think, to start with, well, we're allowed to spend some money and then reimburse ourselves once we actually do the bond. So if we're going to front some money for some of the architectural costs, we could do that. I think the design is probably going to take about six months. I think that's what the architect has told us. So where that puts us and whether we could start construction by fall next year, I, I don't know, and I probably need to be careful what I say because I really don't know. Part of that depends on a lot of different factors as far as, you know, who's going to be involved when it comes to designing and, and how we're going to do things like that, so. My preference would be as quickly as we could move, particularly because construction costs are not going down, they're going up. So the longer we wait, we have a chance to incur more costs, but I understand that it's maybe just not as simple as borrowing the money and building the thing, so.
Maybe Marty knows. Marty, just on average, how long do, you know, if the concept phase moved quickly, we got the soil samples, just, you know, for architectural drawings, biddable drawings?
You could base the design a little bit too because you're, you're really progressing a little bit in phases, so there may be a potential to get a general contractor on board, you get your architect going on the design, and then you work on the fire station design and get that done so that, you know, and then you can work on some other things. So you could, I, I could see the six months time period being ready to bid type of a thing, so I, that seems reasonable for at least getting going, not necessarily maybe everything ready to go, but at that point, you know, discussing, you know, especially if it went up at the pipe plant, pretty simple, get that layout done and, and then, yeah, you're probably talking a good six months for the design of the buildings.
I just, I remember the architect said six months for design.
Yeah.
So Mayor Potem?
Yes, ma'am. It's late.
A couple of proposals. Number one, can we move the chamber of commerce discussion to next week, especially because David's not here and he's really been involved with that, and in the interest of time, we have someone waiting. Also, can we just, I mean, I, I feel like this was the discussion, the, the presentation, we asked questions during it. I like sometime take the information that was presented tonight, look over that, that slideshow presentation, and, I mean, at this point, I mean, I'm just not ready to have like a high-level discussion just after we've just barely seen this. But also, again, in the interest of time, we have someone waiting. I don't know if that was my proposal.
That's, may I ask you guys how you want to handle that? I, I will say this on the chamber discussion, it would be moved to November first, which won't be a problem.
That's fine.
That's not a super time-sensitive issue, so that's not a problem.
I think maybe this would be a very good time for us to, at least if there's any other questions that we have.
From staff.
This would be a good time to talk about them, maybe talk about things that we have learned up to this point. Did you have anything else?
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they want to ask? Any, share things they've learned, people they've talked to, any, any new insights? I mean, we, we, a lot of us have sat through lots of hours with the Public Safety Building Committee, and we are always very grateful for the time that was there. I'm actually glad Christie's here because I, and I've said this before, it would have been wonderful had there been just a knockout, huge amount of cost difference, we wouldn't be in this situation. But because the costs are pretty neutral, then there are all the intangibles that we have to talk about, we have to discuss. I, I am honestly continually mindful of the fact that this is a forty-year plan. This is not just, you know, I don't know what traffic is going to be in forty years. I don't know what, yeah, tracks is twenty years. We could have a track station right down here at the bottom of Second South.
We're all going to have Star Trek energizers that just teleport us.
Yes, yeah.
That's going to solve the problem.
Yeah. Depending on who wins the election nationally.
That's going to be bad in a way.
We could have a wall. Anyway, so I have talked to a lot of people, so I'm just interested, I would like to just hear, just, and maybe it is a brief conversation, are there any other questions or do you have any insights that you would like to share?
One comment I got today from a couple of residents, I don't normally talk to you about this stuff, was a concern that a frustration, a sense of frustration I hadn't heard before that we haven't decided on a location yet, and it sounds like we may still not. I don't know that that's in our best interest to not give some answers sooner the better, in my view.
Can I just say in response to that, I mean, that's just how the agenda item is set up. If the council wants to make it very definitive, it's going to be here no matter what, you have that ability to do that. As far as staff, when we worded the agenda item, it's, you know, depending on how strong you want to be, it's up to you guys, so.
Well, tonight's really the first night the council's had opportunity to discuss a PSP issue. I mean, it is, right? So, well, I get those same concerns, Ben, from residents, and I explained to them that we had a process that we went, we went through, and, and how much I appreciate the, the committee and what they've done and what they've handed off to us, and then that we have the opportunity now as a council to, to look at that information from not only this committee but from all the years and, and who've contacted us through the weeks. I mean, me too, I've been contacted numerous times. I mean, it's more than the road issue, that they let me know how they feel about either site, and we have to take all that information into consideration, so. It's a lot, a lot of information, so.
It is, and I agree, this is the first time where we've had a chance to talk about it. So, and I don't think it, I mean, I would love some giant, wonderful, earth-shattering aha moment to tell me which site is, is right for forty years. And I talked to one resident, and then, you know, then I talked to another resident, and I'm just, I haven't had that earth-shattering. The pro and con list is just so even that I try very, I'm trying very hard to not let my own personal preference cloud my thinking here. So for me, probably the biggest aha was the tracks and that railroad. And I agree with the chief that coming out of, off of Sixth onto Center is a very, very difficult thing. And there, there, as far as I understand, Marty, maybe you can help me with this, there is not going to be a light there.
Oh, not at that intersection, not as it's currently laid out, no.
Because you're too close to this.
I mean, there have been other configurations of realigning the whole intersection of PG Boulevard and Sixth West, but as it's currently laid out, there's, there's really not a good way to signalize that intersection, it's too close to the other signal.
And Marty, that was just a few thousand dollars, right? Just to realign that?
Yeah, it was like ten thousand.
Okay, so really?
No, it was a lot of money.
Ten million.
So you had.
It was ten million dollars.
Fifteen bucks, something like that.
Buildings and all that.
Maybe MAG will do it.
But also be aware that, that eight hundred, at some point, eight hundred north will go to the west of Thirteenth West. Right now, it's currently stopped, but in the future, eight hundred west will extend all the way to Thirteenth West, and there's a little bit of a way around it, but I don't know how that impacts that. If you're going to the west, you can get to Thirteenth West, but that's not constructed yet, there's still another development that has to happen for that to happen.
And not to put Britt on the, or Lieutenant Smith on the spot, is there, do you want to add any insight? I, we haven't heard from the chiefs, so.
I'm not one of the chiefs.
I know, that's why I said.
But you're good on the spot, right?
Let's make that clear.
Sometimes you speak better.
Well, where the fire station goes, you know, doesn't really impact the police department.
Right.
Other than we enjoy, you know, tighter relationship with our firefighters than I think most closeness and traffic where we're located to them. I, I, I think operationally, the police department will run just fine no matter what that department.
Okay.
That's a very politically good answer there.
We like them.
Even though we tease them mercilessly most of the time, right?
At PT time. All right, do you have anything you want to add?
When do we vote on this?
Okay.
In two weeks.
Job done, folks.
Do you have any insight you want to share?
It's been really, really impressed with all of the input that. It's been really, really impressed with all of the input that. Quite excited with the way it's leaned. The public that I'm talking to is well-decided and not that divided. Their pick. Doctor, so.
I like that tagline, Lynn, well-decided, not that divided.
Yeah. And do you want to share that?
No, I do not.
I love how honest you are, Lynn.
I want to pick up everything I can pick up in the meantime.
That's what I meant, too.
And I'm glad to share it with you guys.
I'm still hearing from massive, like massive amounts of people, so I want to wait a couple of weeks, yeah.
All right, anything else you want, any insights, though, you want to share that you've learned? Nope?
Diana, one thing. I learned more tonight from Chief Thomas. Learned from an awful long conversation that I've had in a couple of three weeks.
That's good. All right, so we're done with that discussion?
Done.
I guess so.
Any other questions that you want staff to work on till we get there?
There were a few points of questions that were in that presentation, still aren't answered, I'd love to see.
Yeah, we'll get those two to you as soon as we can.
I mean, if I could make a broad comment just about the whole process, my goal is to have it data-driven, fact-driven, objective, to the extent we can make it an objective decision, so.
So that eight minutes to your house wasn't?
My house is no different than anyone else's, no more special. I don't make these decisions. Well, I heard more citizens the night of the comments speak towards the downtown location, but not by a large portion. But I've read all the comments that have come in through the website, and I think they've leaned the other direction from the majority of what I've seen there.
But if you're going to your point of it being data-driven, all the comments we receive through email and in person, those aren't necessarily data-driven, that's emotional-based, and that should account for some of our decision. It shouldn't be strictly a hundred percent data-driven because of those comments, that's why we take those comments. So we have to take that into consideration, at least I will as a council member, so.
All right, okay, we'll end that discussion, and we have a lot to think about next couple of weeks. She has to go to work in the morning.
Got to go to school about that, she won't work.
And you end with ten-year-olds. All right, so let's move on to our next discussion.
I will make the motion that we move up at eleven C, so that we don't have a person waiting for another discussion.
Yeah, I think I did that, like a little while ago.
So, but do we have, we don't have to continue the chamber conversation?
If you wanted to make a quick motion to continue it to November 1st.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion to continue the chamber discussion to November 1st, and move on to the discussion of the annexation petition.
Okay, I need a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay. I'd rather have the discussion.
About the chamber?
The chamber after.
We just answered.
I'd rather switch the order, but I don't want to hold off.
Well, we can switch the order. I'd rather wait till, I mean, we're almost at eleven o'clock, I would rather just wait till November 1st. I don't think the chamber's pressing, plus I'd like to have David here, because he's been in on the discussions, representing the chamber, so I just don't see.
Motion carried, I just wanted my no on the record.
Okay, all right, so Ben has opposed. Anyway, all right, so let's talk about the annexation petition to annex eight thousand four hundred and fifty-nine square feet of property located at eight ninety-nine East, eleven ninety North, from Utah County into Pleasant Grove City, and present findings of the geotechnical report.
I'm sure Marty will want to make a few comments, but I'll just introduce this. I'm going to have to quickly run through the presentation again here to get to the end. Regurgitate what we already went through here.
That's a good one.
Ah, come on, keep going, don't stop. Almost there. Okay. Okay, so Mr. Anderson, who owns this property that's outlined in red, has come before the city twice previously and asked for the city to approve an annexation of a portion of his property, which the blue line represents where the city boundary is. So you go, well, it's black up through here, but through his property represented is blue. But his property that he owns is actually in two parcels, this in the city and this outside of the city boundaries. He is asking that we allow an extension of our city boundaries and allow for an annexation of his piece of ground to be put together into one parcel of ground, so that he can build a home, which he would like to build just right in this area, which is a little bit flatter. You got a steep slope coming up and through here. So if he could build his home right there and then have a rear yard setback, then that would be ideal for his situation. I've been up on the property and walked it, and that seemed to make sense to me that this would be a good situation. The concern that we have had in the past, and it's not necessarily a planning concern, but it's more an overall policy issue or concern of the city, is that we have established our city boundaries on the lines that we've had them many years ago, and we have been a bit concerned about opening the door to extending our boundaries a little bit, because there's a lot of situations, not necessarily on Mr. Anderson's property, but a lot of situations on the bench areas where we have different types of soils and instability. And by starting to allow our borders to expand a little bit, we could possibly get into situations where we don't want to be. Looking at the area further, now, his property on this map is this little red piece right here. But as you look between Grove Creek and Battle Creek and through this area, we've had some proposals and discussions about annexing this land for a large development property. And you start getting into some steeper slopes there, and then there's some different concerns with stability and such that follow that. And not just that, but that it's also the provision of services, emergency vehicle services, water, sewer, all those type of things come into play when you start expanding areas into the foothills here. Now, in the, well, that would be one thing. But as far as Mr. Anderson's piece is concerned, that is a bit different situation, because you're dealing with a property that has already got access up to the property with the city street, and you've got provision of city services, otherwise with utilities and such, able to come into that property. So there wouldn't be any expansion or extension of city services required to do this.
On the other ones, there would.
I'm sorry?
On the other properties.
If we were to annex large pieces of ground, then yes, it would require all types of expansions to service those. Now, there are also some other properties, the adjoining property owner has a piece of ground, which is outside a city boundary. He has already landscaped them. This property owner here also owns actually property all the way around here. He owns a much bigger piece of ground, but he's also landscaped and uses his land, even though they've already built homes, so they're not seeking to expand their ground in order to be able to build a home in a good location. But they might possibly have interest in bringing their properties into the city as well. So those are things to consider. I think from a planning standpoint, we don't really have major concerns, especially with Mr. Anderson's piece, as to whether or not we should allow that to come in. I think it would just be, if we do go down that road, then we should make a policy statement that if, I mean, if you feel comfortable in making that kind of statement, that if it doesn't require the expansion of other services and that we can otherwise show that there's not problems with the soil or instability, then that can be something we will consider for annexation. But otherwise, we will have reservations with doing that.
So what about the home to the south right there? What would prevent them from coming in and out?
See, they are currently in the city, so these homes are all in the city currently. This lot is the only lot in that neighborhood which is not developed.
But couldn't they still come in and request an extension of right there, or not?
They could, but they would have to purchase the property from Metro.
Right.
And they don't, Metro's not going to sell them property, so.
Sorry.
Can you talk into your mic?
Oh, you got me, you got me. Man. These guys, have these guys made the purchase?
Well, they own, they own the property.
Property.
Okay. So it's this property owner here that owns this, and he owns all the way around here. This guy right here just owns this little triangular piece. So, we've got the applicant here, we've got Marty.
So someone is going to present the findings of the geotechnical report?
That would be Marty.
That would be me. So I did review it, they've done actually two, one's a hazardous conditions study, and then one's a geotechnical report. I believe this may even be the trenches that they dug on that property to do that investigation, possibly. They essentially were trying to find out if there were any fault zones or things that went directly through the property, and they did not find that. They did find that there, that the soil underneath was some alluvial fan soil, which means it's deposited there through storms and things of that nature, but long, they were years in the past. The thing that I think is critical here is that in this situation, we've got an existing lot that right now he could come and build a house on, and it would be here. Now, we're talking about adding point one nine acres of property to the back of that lot to allow him to maybe move the house from here to here. So this, the existing site conditions that are there are already there, and adding point two acres to it, which the geotech and the hazardous study found that there was no other findings that led us, would lead us to say, it's not going to be buildable on those additional point two acres. Then there's a question of whether or not we're just doing it to be nice, play nice with the resident, or whether or not there's really some concern there. And so from a standpoint of engineering, whether or not the property could be developed, all of the studies, and he's done a lot of work to be able to prove that, that he doesn't, there wasn't any findings of any concern on the site with regards to annexing that into the city. And again, talking further with what Ken has said, in the past, we have elevations that we try to keep there. We know it's on the bench, there's higher risks. Anytime you're up on the bench, you've got potential flows from the mountains, rockfall, you've got, you know, the fault lines up there. All of those things play into this. In this situation, I don't think it's affecting the home that will be built on that lot, regardless of whether or not we annex this. If he wants to go through the process of the annexation and go through that process, I wouldn't oppose it as an engineer saying it's not going to work for us. Now, if we, again, if we want somebody to come and build up higher on the bench with the house or things like that, then those, that's where we look at them individually and say, yeah, that doesn't make sense, but.
But nothing of concern in the report?
Okay.
I guess I should say nothing more than already exists as, with the current conditions.
You ready to go?
I got a couple of quick questions for Ken. No cost associated with annexing property to the city, right, to the taxpayers, there's no additional cost. I've had a citizen ask that, and I strained to think of any cost that we would incur by annexing.
Well, the cost that the city will incur with this is notification, so we have some requirements for making notifications for annexations. We have to notify other entities, we have to put notification in the newspaper in certain places. There's a protest period, there's a whole process that we go through. So there's a little bit of administrative cost that would be associated with this. Most of it would be offset with the fee that the application for annexation will take care of. But otherwise, in this particular situation, no, because we're not extending services. If we were to be looking at extending services, yes, there would be.
Ken, a second question I have is, and I've got no problem with this, I think we ought to just do this to solve the problem for a resident, but I'm wondering if there's some other solution besides an annexation that doesn't change our border that would be like a guaranteed waiver of any setback requirement on the backside, or some kind of other solution short of an annexation that solves the same problem?
Well, I suppose the applicant could go to the Board of Adjustment and request a variance from the rear yard setback requirement based on that. It seems to me that the most appropriate way to take care of this would be annexation request. But should the city determine they don't, the city council determine you don't want to go down that route, or you deny it for some reason, that would give greater reason for going to the Board of Adjustment.
Well, I'm okay with either solution, so.
And I think that would be his call, if he wanted to.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Let's do it.
If you'd like. Mayor Potem, this is an item for discussion, I guess, but I'm going to propose that we, I guess he is not here. Do we want this, this isn't an ordinance, it's not a resolution, but I propose that we give instruction to staff to prepare the annexation of this gentleman's property at approximately eight ninety-nine East, eleven ninety North, from Utah County into Pleasant Grove City, and find, and accepting the findings of the geotechnical study.
Second.
Yeah, so do we need to make a motion in a second on this?
I think that's fine if you just do your vote.
Okay, all in, I have a motion by Ben, a second by Lynn, all in favor of that direction to staff.
Okay, wait just a second, was that an ordinance, did you say, Ben?
This is not an ordinance or a resolution.
We're just telling staff.
Start the process.
But can we make a motion if this wasn't noticed as a, as an official action by the council?
So we're just telling staff to go ahead and.
To start the process of annexation.
Of annexation.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bless you, sir.
Was it worth the ten forty-seven? Is it ever?
Thanks for sticking around, you're a trooper.
Thank you very much, is that sort of on your police station or your fire station?
Stuff to her.
I think this area of PG needs a facelift, it needs image boost, and I think that along with your chief's recommendation, just a reminder to somebody who lives outside of the community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks.
Would you please thank all these people that are sitting out here at the stadium?
Yes, thank you.
Can we finish and?
Watch this.
See how fast we can do the staff business?
Wait, we still have to go into redevelopment. Hey, we're not even close.
Mayor Potem, I'll make a motion that we go past eleven if necessary.
I think it's half, isn't it midnight? Oh, it's eleven?
Eleven to pass, but.
All right, so Ben is motioning that we can go past eleven?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, if we need to. All right, boy, the November 1st meeting, go ahead, Scott.
What the, oh, sorry, are we going into redevelopment?
No, we're doing that.
We do that after we're all done.
November 1st, I will send you guys an email with what's going on on November 1st, is that okay?
What? Brilliant!
Hey, no, are you talking on November 1st or Tuesday, October 18th?
No, November 1st.
Because this is October 18th.
Yeah, we're doing this tonight.
We're doing the RDA tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, so other than that, there's nothing else?
All right, Libby, anything from the neighborhoods? Okay. Ken, anything from the community development?
Nothing.
You have talked all night.
Email.
Okay, thank you.
Smart answer.
Marty, anything, come on. Nothing? Dion?
No, I'm going to, no, I don't.
The first time this year. Chief? Thank you.
Yes, he has something.
Chief Potem, Chief Potem.
Yes, you do. Let's talk about facial hair here.
Oh, paying the big bucks.
Twenty-five bucks.
To not shave.
Here, use this.
The real question is, why didn't you pay for the full beard, Brett?
I choose not to answer that one. Because a full beard doesn't look good on me, that's why.
That's fair enough.
Yeah, if you've noticed, all, most of our officers are kind of scruffy-looking right now. Yeah, hairier than usual, and that's our annual beards for Santa. So, you know, we have a department policy that precludes us from having facial hair beyond firefighter-looking mustaches, because we just can't look like that.
Whoa.
But in November, and we've kind of started bleeding over into October the last couple of years, in November and December, the chief looks the other way, as long as we pay him off, right? And he uses that money that we pay him to provide Christmas for needy families in the community, because we always, during the course of our duties, run into those families, so. We raise hundreds of dollars. We raise hundreds of dollars every year to do that, and it's been a great thing, and then our association always chips in another few hundred, and our kernels will chip in. So we have, you know, a fairly good chunk of money to provide a good Christmas for people that wouldn't have otherwise, so. It's for charity and a good-worthy cause, and we like to look scruffy for two months out of the year.
Okay, so I'm throwing down the gauntlet here, I'm doing it, starting October 30th.
Actually, Sid and I were just going to throw it down on the legs.
Throw it down?
And Denise.
You guys have to pay, right?
Yeah, you gotta pay.
I'll pay.
It's $25 a month for a goatee and $50 a month for a beard. For legs, I think that's like $100 a month.
Deion, come on, man.
Deion and I will grow mustaches.
Oh, it's a great idea and a great thing that you're doing, thank you.
Our pleasure.
All right, Denise, any financial news?
No.
Okay, Scott?
Just Nate Seacrest here is with the Village, and has, the Village, if you remember, we've talked a little bit about a streaming, we are, we're doing our regular stream, we are also doing a secondary stream to test their equipment and to make sure that this is functional. What it is, is it's a software that, it's an agenda software in a way, that a resident can sign up for the app, they can point which items that they want to be informed on, and then when we get to that item, Kathy pushes a button and it shows up on their phone, they get a text saying they're now addressing this item, and then they can click on the live stream and watch for that particular item if they don't want to sit through it.
So when you say it's being tested, who can see it?
Nobody right now.
But who will be able to see it?
Eventually, it will be a stream available to the public.
But I mean, like, who could see the test to see if something that we want to move forward and do?
That's what we're working on. Right now, nobody can see, we haven't gone public as far as here's how you access the stream.
So like ESPN?
Didn't he get a text?
Oh, okay, cool. So like ESPN, if I say I want to hear all the notifications about the Redskins, then that would be very similar, okay?
Well, it's been, I mean, I had downloaded the app today, my phone was buzzing every time we changed agenda items, so it's functional in that sense. We are working on an agreement between us and the Village, is the name of the product, which we'll have on our November 15th agenda. What they are providing the service is free of charge to the city, as we are the first city that they've worked with. They want to use us as the test case to market with other cities, but, so the price is right for us, and.
It's hard to turn down that price.
Still, I think we'll continue to work out just whatever bugs we have left on November 1st, and then we'll enter into the agreement, and then we'll start publicizing it to the public as an option for them to. I think for the time being, we'll still keep our other stream, we'll probably have two options available, and if we just get to a point where everything's fine and dandy, we can maybe just go to the one stream, but.
Okay, I'll have fun.
We have a voter information pamphlet that will be going out to the residents in regards to the bond. Now, this is something that's required by state law. In that voter information pamphlet is the bond language, and it's also the pro and con statements and the rebuttals in regards to the bond. Kathy, did we decide when we're sending that out, did we already send it? Okay, so it's coming out soon, so that will go to every resident. We are, I'm also working on an informational flyer that is neutral in nature, it's just informational that we will want to send out to each resident as well. I sent this to you, if you want to take a look at a hard copy, in essence, it's a trifold.
When did you send that, Scott?
Oh, I don't know, about noon today. So take a look at that, if there's formatting things or information that you'd like to see different, I've already made some notes on things that we need to change as far as typos and things like that, but I want to get a feel from, before we send this out, I want to make sure council is okay with, one, the information, and, two, the formatting of it, so, if you can take a look at that. Yeah. Yeah, what they have is, when we send it to Freedom Mailing, they have, I can't remember what they call it, but it sends it to every address in our city regardless of whether it's a rental or a homeowner, and all it says is resident and an address in Pleasant Grove City. It does not say Scott Derrington with my address, and it's not that specific, so. It's above and beyond what we send our utility bills out of.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Nate, do you have anything?
I think you guys are great.
What is this thing, Nate, is that the microphone? Microphone, that's the camera up there?
We went with an omnidirectional microphone so that we can hear, because every now and then you'll hear things shouted out from the crowds, and I participate in a lot of city councils around the state, and there's always a response to it, and you don't necessarily know what somebody's saying.
So this will pick it up now? Beautiful.
Awesome, thanks for being here, and for a late meeting, you're a trooper, too.
We've given you some great test stuff.
Thanks for credit.
Kathy, do you have anything? No, Lynn? Okay, nothing?
I already laid down my challenge, so I'm good.
Ben?
I'm good tonight.
Okay. All right, we're gonna, I need, do we need to adjourn, I need someone to do that, or do I do that?
Do we have any Platts or calendar we need to review first?
Oh, we already, wait, do we have?
You have the RDA item.
Yes, we.
Trying to do these in order.
All right.
I'll make the motion, Mayor Protem, that we adjourn and reconvene as the Pleasant Grove City Redevelopment Agency.
Motion by Ben, second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, now.
Thank, thank you.
Now, this is when the really good stuff happens.
Eddie, hold on to your seats. I might want to get plugged in, Nate, because I don't know.
Okay, are we rolling, are we live? What you have in front of you is a potential opportunity for a building in Pleasant Grove City where there is, right now, the developer asking for some financial participation from the city. The financial participation, the exact numbers and things like that have not been decided, but what we need to do in order to actually put this into place is we need to create, it used to be called a CDA, the state law changed last year, and it's now called a Community Reinvestment Project Area, so Community Reinvestment Area. What that is, is the taxing entities, generally speaking, the big ones are Pleasant Grove City, Utah County, and Alpine School District. Can give back a portion of the property tax that is being generated by a project as financial participation, I think, a tax incentive is what we call it, with a particular development in our community. The area that is right now being discussed is the nine acres in front of the Synergy Building and in front of the BMW property right off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard. St. John Property owns, Properties owns that property, and we have entered into, I would say, negotiations with them, at least is what the city would participate, but in order, if we reach an agreement with them on that, in order for this to officially happen, we have to have the area. So this is step one of creating the area. Step two would be creating a budget plan and a budget, a budget and a, I can't remember what Randy told me, we create a budget, which is in essence what our participation's going to be, but this is the nuts and bolts of creating the actual area, so there's a legal description that comes with it, and I think that's what we have.
All right.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions for Scott?
Right now, this doesn't commit us to anything, this is, just gets the ball rolling on
To see if it's going to happen.
On the ability to do that. If for some reason we cannot reach an agreement with them, this process just stops and ends, so we won't go further to actually.
But are we, do we still create the CDA?
If we can't reach an agreement with the.
And the CDA is just null and void at that point?
Well, this just is the notification resolution to get it started, this does not create the area.
Okay.
There's a public hearing process, there's official action to create the area, this is just the, kind of the kickoff to that.
Okay, does, any questions, anything, any comments, then go ahead, let's make a motion.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2016-03, RDA designating the Grove Tower Community Reinvestment Project Area to be created and authorizing the directing all necessary action by the agency, staff, consultants, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
All right, Lynn, I'm sorry, go.
All right, a motion by Eric, oh, wait, this is by voice, is that?
Resolution.
So I have a motion by Eric and a second by Sid, by voice, Diana, yes, Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to adjourn and reconvene as Pleasant Grove City Council.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Eric and a second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do I need to make the motion to come out of, are we done with the council meeting?
Yeah, you can adjourn.
Now, we just adjourned.
Adjourn as a council.
I made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See ya, love ya, bye.
Nice job, Diana, good, good job.
Holy.